Did you know that more than half of what goes in our landfill is recyclable? Even though most of us do our best recycle, with all the packaging we use and all the waste we generate, we could do a better job. I'm King County Eco-Consumer Tom Watson, and I'm here to help you become a better recycler. The first step to being a better recycler is to get to know your garbage. A lot of things that could go in the recycle bin or your yard waste cart are ended up in the trash can. So let's take a look and see what we have in this can.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 21st council meeting. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember Evans.
President.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Here.
Mayor Millman.
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
President.
Councilmember Arndt.
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Can we stand for the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to accept the agenda in order and content.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We have two special presentations tonight. The first is East Rail Partners Executive Director Catherine Hollis. Welcome back.
Thank you all so much for the time tonight. Always great to be here. I was actually here earlier today. I'll share a little bit more about that in a little bit. Truly, today I'm here to share a little bit more about what's going on on the rest of the East Trail to make sure that with everything you all are doing here, you're tracking what's going on north and south, but also just to acknowledge all the work that's happening here in Woodinville. I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Evans and her role on the East Trail Regional Advisory Council and the work she's doing with the other governmental partners and owner entities. So thank you all. This, if you all noticed, the photo on the left is the JB Growers. So I guess it's not the lavender fields right now. It's the pumpkin patch right now, the trail, and then Chateau St. Michelle's right on the other side. Part of why I love this photo is part of the East Trail in Woodinville is that beautiful view of the mountain in the background. You also get a couple images of some other sections along the trail that are a little farther along than here in Woodinville. Oh, and I'm not asking. I am advancing on my own. Let's see. There we go. So this is almost the full 42 miles. What you don't see is all the way to the city of Snohomish, which is a 12-mile stretch. Folks can think back or folks that know of the map, about five years ago, there was a whole lot less green and light green. So we've got about, of the full 42-mile corridor, is about 20 miles open. And a lot of the red you all see is right in this neck of the woods, but you all are also working really hard on opening, you know, getting your section underway. But it is pretty neat to look at this and see open sections and the use that this corridor is already getting. And like I said, it's sort of all eyes on Woodinville right now in the northern section. So these are photos that Councilmember Sarah Perry posted. City Woodinville hosted the East Trail Regional Advisory Council in July, so met here in Chambers, and then the mayor and Councilmember Evans took us on a really, I mean, it's a really short walk, really, from here out to Willmont Gateway Park and then up on the future corridor, or I guess the current corridor, future trail. And I think what just Woodinville so clearly demonstrated is that it's not an either-or with trail and road infrastructure, but it's a both. And all of these pieces work together and fit together. And you all have a really big pile of dirt in the city right now because of this, because of the work that you all are doing, moving this vision forward and moving your section of trail forward. So it's just really exciting to get to work with you all and partner with you all and watch the vision for this section of trail really starting to come to fruition. There we go. And I think all of those pieces that you all demonstrated through the East Trail Regional Advisory Council in July show how the East Trail is more than just a trail. And we're seeing this here in Woodinville. It's really about community. It's about trail and area development. You know, you've already got developers here who are building knowing the trail's coming with East Trail flats. It's about, it's an economic driver. It's how people can get to work. It's how people can get around to businesses. And it also is about transportation connections. So it's, again, it's not either or, but it's an all of above. And these are just a few shots from around the corridor, from recreation to light rail to that center section is the first official retail on the trail. So it's Chainline Brewing in Kirkland. But, you know, it's a long corridor. It's a big trail, and there's a lot of different pieces that all come together, and so much of that we're going to see here in Woodinville, which I think is just really exciting. So as, we are the nonprofit Friends of Group, and really, our role is to help steward this ambitious trail effort in partnership with government and with community. We do that in three ways. One is through building advocacy for the trail. We've been honored to work with you all in supporting state funding, federal funding, writing letters of support, answering private sector business questions on should we support this, should we submit a letter, those pieces. And you all have been bringing in the dollars, so we're just honored to be able to help steward that vision. We also are really about sort of partnering with community groups along the corridor to bring this trail to life. I was here today getting to meet with the Woodinville Creative District, economic driver. It's all fits together. So it's really exciting to think about the different areas of the trail and how we're bringing people in to experience it. And then the third piece of our role is really about bringing the private sector into this work. So in other areas of the corridor, we worked with Meta and REI for direct trail investment of $2 million. In Bellevue, we worked with Amazon for $7.5 million investment. You've got Modern Hydrogen that's already really excited about a pretty unique way to get a trail built here in Woodinville that you all have been working on. So again, we really look at what you all are doing here. We're here to help support and amplify and fill in gaps as you all continue your work. This, I brought this up again, hopefully this will work. Yep, there we go. Okay. So this is sort of an example of where we were less than five years ago, a whole lot more black. So again, this is no longer an idea. We see that it's no longer an idea here in Woodinville. There's a lot more trail open and more to come. We also didn't have the East Lakes Nammish Trail open five years ago. So in terms of a connected trail network that connects with so many eastside cities, East Trail is a regional project, and you all are building out your section of it, which is so exciting. So really, what I wanted to do is just highlight some of the other big projects along the corridor that are, that are coming your way and sort of how the work here is going to amplify other projects. So the Wilburton Trestle, my guess is most folks have driven 405 north and seen that big wooden railroad trestle before you hit downtown Bellevue. That project's fully funded and underway. It's supposed to open in about a year from now. It doesn't look like that much has happened because there are, well, there are literally two companies in the country that can work on old railroad trestles like this, and they've had to go beam by beam to identify what's rotten, what's not. So it's really been about this understructure, and they're about to hit go on actually opening the trail part of it or working on the trail to get it opened. And along with that project is the 405 crossing that's, will go, the trail will travel over 405 south and then actually a tunnel under 405 northbound, and then you get to the Wilburton Trestle. So at about this time next year, for folks who put in big bike mileage, which isn't necessarily me, but you'll be able to go from the Mercer Slough Environmental Cellar all the way to Woodinville on fully connected East Trail. So again, we are getting to the point that it's not just these segmented sections, but a fully connected trail, which again gets us to all eyes on Woodinville. The other big project in, that's under King County Parks' ownership, is the Steel Bridge. So in the Factoria area, if you're going east or west of I-90, it's a slow, square graffiti cover bridge. It's about a $50 million project. There's about $39 million funded towards it to date. Some of that is federal, which we're sort of waiting to see how those raised grants end up. But the really good news is thanks to King County voters, the King County Parks Levy passed in August, which also has dedicated $65 million for King County Parks projects for East Trail. So it really gives the county space and resources to work on those red sections of trail in King County, south of here. So other King County gaps besides the projects you all are working on is 12 miles into Snohomish County. Two summers ago, yes, so 2024, Snohomish County officially rail-banked, and they are in the planning process of sort of working on their sections of trail from trailhead to trailhead. It sounds like they really want to work from the county line north, so really thinking about Woodinville's working on their sections, let's start building north from there, which is really excited, exciting. And then A is down south. There's about a mile of trail from where the trail currently ends into Jean Coulon Park, and it's actually still owned by the railroad. And at this point, we know that BNSF, the railroad company, and King County are in negotiations on trying to acquire that section, so you don't have a trail that just randomly ends and turns into tracks, which is what the experience is on the south end. So we've got about half of this open. Obviously, there's a long way to go. We crunched numbers collectively as an effort, and to get every single one of these projects done all the way to the city of Snohomish, we're looking at a pretty big price tag of $350 million probably. So we've got a lot of work to do collectively, and that's part of our role is to be here to partner with you all on how can we think about funding? How do we work with our partners in Snohomish? How do we think about some of these last gaps in sort of King County? So we see more and more green on this map. Also wanted just to share some pictures of sort of what is already out there and what I know, you know, folks in Woodinville are starting to think about. So this is the section of East Trail in Kirkland that actually runs through the Google campus, and there was private sector investment there from Google. But there's an outdoor amphitheater, beer, there's more than just beer there. They have coffee and ice cream and other goodies, too. Splash pad. So just a neat example of sort of what trail and area development or how a trail can be more than just a trail. In Redmond, you know, that map on the right, you also see a solid line of light rail, which wasn't the case two years ago. But hopefully, we'll get that solid line across, across the lake pretty soon, too. But you've got a trail that directly connects with light rail in a couple places, park space, and again, this activation for community and many, many things that that could be. So it's neat to see these different areas and how different municipalities along the corridor are activating, engaging the trail. This is a future-looking, but the Wilburton section in, of the trail in Bellevue is underdeveloped or not developed. And I really look at Woodinville, and this section of Bellevue is the areas that really have us opportunity for trail and area development, thinking about creating two front doors to businesses, one to the parking lot, one to the trail, thinking about how housing fits in with pieces. So it's just, it's going to be neat to be partnering with, with the county and with the city of Bellevue and with you all to bring sort of that vision to these two areas of the trail that are really most set up for trail and area development. So that is a picture from the Wilburton Framework Plan, which can be found online, and I'm happy to, I know that staff have that, but happy to share that as well. But again, all eyes on Woodinville. So just, it's been an honor to work with you all, to continue to work with you all. A couple things that as Woodinville goes from idea to building out sections of trail that we wanted to flag as resources. One is the East Trail Public Arts Principles. We worked with all of the owner entities of the corridor. So we worked with the Public Spaces Commission here in Woodinville. Kirkland and Redmond both have arts staff. We worked with For Culture at the County to create arts principles that are sort of a guiding, just guiding ideas for how each entity can think about public art on their section and hopefully have it have some sort of connection to the rest of the 42-mile corridor. It in no way supersedes what any owner entity is doing, but just has some of those overarching principles to think about what public arts can look like. I mean, I think especially as Woodinville formerly has the Woodinville Creative District, and the trail runs right through two big areas of that, just a lot of opportunity for thinking about how do we create community? And we ended up as the nonprofit partner really running and pulling together the work on the arts principles, because what we heard from community is public art is what makes this public space truly welcoming for everyone. And you all have lots of ideas for what this can look like in Woodinville, but it's pretty exciting. I put a quote down here, "A place that helps community move enthusiastically into the future." And that's not a quote about East Trail. It's a direct quote from Creative Districts for Washington State, but it could be a quote about the East Trail as well. And that's why I think so much of this fits together. It's economic driver. It is community spaces. It's how we create and build community, you know, along the east side. So that's what I've got for you all today. I'm open for any questions, but just thank you, and we are excited for more.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Catherine, for coming today. I really appreciate all your efforts in bringing us all together and, and helping to drive funding. And that's one of my questions. I know we have a lot of money we need to find to help sort through this. And in June, we had an off-site session, and my group got, got the job of trying to figure out where we'd go pitch. But in reality, you've had a lot of successes with Google, with Amazon, with other regional major players. Is there anything that we should be thinking of as we are, you know, going through and planning our portion of East Trail that could set us up for success in going out to, to get some of that public-private partnership that you've had opportunities to get?
Yeah. I feel like you all are somewhat already underway with that. I look at Modern Hydrogen as an example, of a local business that could really bring a unique, I mean, just win-win story for everyone. So, you know, I think in a lot of ways, you all are building that. But I also think it's, are we going to be in a place with current economic climate, with where we are here in Snohomish, to get some of those big investments? I don't know. But I do think that with, you know, a model that we can think about here in Woodinville is, we do have a lot of really invested businesses. And so are there ways that we can work with the city to bring, oh, let's pull in, you know, this, this company can pledge this much, and then, excuse me, and then we can come to you all saying, hey, we've got, you know, half a million pledged. Can we start this, you know, can we try to do half a mile or a mile? So it might be more of building blocks as we think about this section. And I also think that because we have so much momentum behind this, while everything seems tight in terms of resources from local to state to federal, I also think the momentum that's already here is, lends the Woodinville project and in north into Snohomish to more funding opportunities.
Thank you.
Any questions? I would like to add, and maybe not everybody knows this, but we have aggressively reached out to, enthusiastically reached out to a lot of private groups. Modern Hydrogen is mentioned there, one. We've taught, Councilmember Arndt and I just had a meeting with Woodinville Garden Club, and they're excited about helping us with the trail. Poloneer Pathways, Woodinville Rotary, Woodinville Arts Alliance. There's all kinds of groups. I hope I'm not missing one. Feels like I am. But there's all kinds of groups interested along with our, what we've worked with, with federal, state, and county and local groups. So I think it's an exciting opportunity. There's a lot of people very excited about this project and willing to pitch in, so.
Yeah. We look forward to supporting and helping fill in where we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Next, we have a presentation from North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area. Christine Scotten. Welcome.
Hello. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here. Christine Scotten, and I am the program manager for the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area. Yeah, so while we're waiting, I'm just going to give a quick update about what the NPRSA is, who we are, what we are, what our current levy, what we're doing at our current levy that ends the end of this year, and then what we have, the ballot measure that we have coming up on the 4th. So here we go. Okay, so what is the NPRSA? So we are a voter-approved tax district, which includes the cities of Bothell, Kenmore, and Woodinville, and parts of King and Snohomish County. And I just would like to say that each of these agencies have their elected officials that are, serve as board members on our board. So, and we do share boundary lines with the North Shore School District. And so currently in this levy, we are maintaining two buildings, one at the North Shore, that is the North Shore Senior Center in Bothell, and then the Health and Wellness and Adult Day Health Center also in Bothell. And so here is a visual of our border, borderlines, our district boundaries. And so our current levy was approved by the voters at a tax rate of four cents per $1,000 of assessed property value, which we started collecting in 2020. That currently expires this year, and we have collected about $1.5 million annually that we have invested into the buildings to ensure that the North Shore Senior Center continues programmings like community dining, food pantry, adult day health care and rehabilitation programs, say also at the Adult Day Health Center. They have programs and services for people with disabilities, fitness classes and wellness support, social activities, and also transportation and resource connections for those in need. And so I'm not going to go through every single one of these capital repairs, but the next few slides just kind of list some of the repairs that we have done. Strategically, we completed at the beginning of the levy repairs that focused on the interior of the buildings, things that people can't see like HVAC. We had a huge carpet and flooring replacement as it posed some safety issues there. And so currently, we're doing a lot of exterior-facing projects like envelope repairs, repainting, and then also some vegetation projects. And so we are on the upcoming ballot for a levy renewal. So if renewed Proposition 1 would continue to fund needed building repairs at the senior center to ensure continued accessibility and maintain self and function, safe and functioning buildings for senior center users, and continued funding would invest into improvements for spaces that the community relies on. So the proposed measure would be a six-year duration, and then the proposed tax rate would be five cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So one cent increase and based on the average tax assessed home value of $1 million, a homeowner would be taxed at the rate of about $4.17 per month. And so Proposition 1 does require 60% of voters to pass and must meet a validation requirement of 40% voter turnout of the last general election. And here are some links that, to our website, if you want to know more about our ballot measure, and then also resources, links to the senior center, and also the elections. And I believe that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Arndt.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing this information. Can you give us an idea of some of the upcoming work that if this ballot measure were to pass, that the NPRSA would engage in for the senior center buildings?
Yeah. So a lot of the major, these buildings were built in the 80s and early 90s, so a lot of the major building components are coming to the end of their useful lifecycle. One big one is the elevators. And so we'll have to do elevator replacements, and there's elevators in both buildings. And with the demographic that the senior center generally serves, that is pretty, pretty important to have. And so that'll be one. We'll be doing some well-needed or much-needed kitchen renovations, bathroom renovations. So yeah, there's a lot of big, big items that are going to happen, hopefully, in, in this next cycle.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
On one of your slides, you mentioned maintenance. Yes. Is this levy going to include money and funding to maintain the building in addition to renovate? Because the previous levy was, sorry, it did not include maintenance, so this one includes maintenance of the building itself?
Yes. So our board has approved, I believe, $215,000 annually to go towards maintenance of the buildings.
Thank you. It's good to see you again, by the way.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Christine, sometimes I hear this thrown around, and I don't know if you know, is it really the second-largest senior center in the U.S.?
That is what I hear, yes.
That's what I hear, too. So I know, I've gone over there with a couple community members who were interested in it, and I was really impressed with the level of programming. I happened, my first time, I happened to go on a Wednesday. I did not realize how incredible Pi Day was there.
Pi Day is a thing.
People lining up out the door. But it has been really good to see firsthand some of the things that, that have been replaced and what safety improvements have really meant to the people who use the senior center all the time. I've talked to a number of the seniors there. And it's also been really eye-opening to see what needs to be replaced. In the kitchen, I believe, there's some equipment that's dead, just not working, so that impacts the ability to, to service the seniors. And I know the elevator, you know, I've gone in it with some residents, and they've had some misgivings about the noises and all that kind of stuff. So all really valid things, and I'm glad to see that these are on the levy. And I hope that as a council that we can get behind this, because it's an important asset in our community to serve a really important contingency of our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bess Campbell.
I just wanted to make one more comment, actually. There's a lot of talk about programming, and I want to make sure people understand, too, that if they like the program... that if they like the programming for the senior center, that's not funded by this levy. We have to be careful that, we want to make sure that people like this programming, which we all do. The North Shore Senior Center itself really could use some donations as well, so when you fill out your ballot, consider also making a donation to keep this alive, because I don't want people to think that everything ends just with the building. It's not just the building, it's the programming that we like, too. So it's two parts to it. Yes, you can't have the programming without the building, but you can't have programming if there's no money for it. So I think it's important to call out that we do need to maintain both of those, and it's such a great program, and for the years that I spent with you going through paperwork and buildings and things like that. It's important for us to see the difference, and that the public knows that they can do their part to help maintain those programs as well. So thank you for the presentation. I know from experience how difficult your job is with all of the different paperworks and all of the invoices that you have. And in my experience, you've been doing a very good job on the levy, so congratulations. Maybe we'll get five more years of this.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. We have a business item coming up to discuss whether the council will support the resolution for the levy for the NPRSA Senior Center. So that'll be coming up. Next, we have public comments. Okay, public comments. So when I call your name, please come up to the microphone and state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. First is Sharon Galicia.
Hi, my name's Sharon Galicia, and I do not live in Woodinville. I live in Bothell. And so I'm here today to ask you to support Prop 1. I'm a neurologist at Optum, and I've been practicing in Bothell since 2020. I began volunteering weekly at the North Shore Senior Center Adult Day Health Program in 2023. So for those of you who aren't familiar with it, this program is a four-hour, five-day-a-week program for those with physical or mental challenges, including those with Alzheimer's and Parkinson's dementia. As a neurologist, I see many of these diseases in my own patients. I first heard of the program from my patient's husband, who was very grateful that he found this resource. I've since referred multiple patients to the program, which provides physical exercise, mental stimulation, and so on, social interaction. It also gives much deserved and needed respite to the caregivers as well. So as a neurologist, I've come to the point of my career when those I diagnose with early dementia years ago have progressed to advanced stages. Many of my patients who are able to tell me their stories have now turned quiet. Their caregivers are now the ones who speak for them, who tell me about their daily struggles and any bright moments in between. So sadly, as dementia progresses, often caregivers and my patients feel forgotten and unseen. The Adult Day Program is a valuable resource to the elderly and the disabled in our community. It provides a place where participants and their caregivers are seen. The compassion and patience of the staff are impressive. They entertain, they listen, they pay attention. Volunteering and being involved here has made me a better physician, a better daughter, and a better person. The North Shore Senior Center Adult Day Program touches many patients, or many people. It makes a richer, kinder, more inclusive community. It really is a hidden gem. Prop 1 ensures that the North Shore Senior Center will be able to continue providing the service in a safe environment. So please support Prop 1 to keep the North Shore Senior Center thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahmad Amiri.
Good evening, city councilmembers. My name is Bobby Ahmad Amiri, and I'm longtime Woodinville resident. I'd like to offer a few brief comments on tonight's agenda. First, I believe the vast majority of communities support to propose $50 property tax to continue funding the North Shore Senior Center. That said, it would be helpful to see usage data. How many Woodinville residents are benefiting, and in what ways? This is roughly $300,000 budget item, and we should ensure those services are well-utilized and accessible. Regarding the Lime scooters, the concept has potential, but it may not align well with the Woodinville geography or transportation patterns. The pilot feedback is telling. Users enjoys them, residents don't, and businesses are slightly in favor. I believe Allison Farmer mentioned that Lime offering has structured its pilots by launching in summer and deploying fewer units than contract allows. That's worth keeping in mind as we evaluate the result. Finally, I appreciate the council openness to creative ideas, but when we adopt policies that differ significantly from other cities are doing, one more time I say that, that differ significantly from other cities are doing, we should proceed with caution. We have already seen this with unit, lot subdivision standards presented with a good intention, but not aligned with our goals and out of sync with established approaches. Let's learn from our mistakes and take closer look at how similar cities are addressing these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our first business item, business item number eight, update on the Lime Pilot Program. Mr. Hill.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jared Hill, and I am joined by Parker Dawson from Lime to provide an update on the first year of the Lime Pilot Program. I will be providing a presentation on the city side of how the program went with information on things like community feedback and trends, and then we'll pass it over to Parker, who will be providing an update on the data and ridership, and we'll both be available for questions. So as a refresher of the timeline of this project, last summer, King County Council approved the use of e-bikes on county-owned trails such as the Sumamish River Trail, following other nearby cities starting to use Lime. Staff brought the concept to council in February and had a contract approved for a two-year summer pilot in May. The program started on June 16th of this year and just wrapped up on October 1st. Our map was continuously changing throughout the duration of the pilot, and was very much a living document. Following feedback from developments like TRF and Wooden Creek, we submitted tickets to Lime to have modified allowances on the properties. Several types of zones were developed in coordination with the Police Department, Public Works, Chamber of Commerce, and Woodinville Wine Country. In areas with strong ridership where a city-owned parcel was available, we created parking zones to encourage parking to take place in a safe, controlled space. In addition, the city heard of several private properties contacting Lime directly to set up their own solutions, devices. That included businesses such as Willow's Lodge and Chateau St. Michelle, and possibly others as well. Over the course of the pilot, the city averaged 81 devices in Woodinville on any given day. Lime was responsible for their deployment, maintenance, and charging. To ensure that we had, we heard feedback from a diverse range of stakeholders, the city established a working group, a working group that was designed to review monthly reports of survey information, discuss any issues they were hearing from their communities, and give direction to Lime on how to refine the program in Woodinville. This included the Chamber of Commerce to represent the business community, Woodinville Wine Country for Tourism, Public Works, the Woodinville Police Department, and representative from the City Manager's Office as well. One of the major takeaways from the working group, and also Lime, was getting a contract with King County Parks across the finish line to allow ridership in unincorporated King County areas between Woodinville and Redmond. The county received the contract in March, agreed to sign pending Woodinville City Council approval in May, and come October, still today, we have not been able to get that across the finish line. There have been many attempts from Woodinville and Lime staff to complete this process. We're going to continue to advocate for that going into next summer, and hopefully, we can make that happen. The second major issue that all groups brought forward was ADA access. Initial deployments in June were positioned on ramps and in key crossings. Staff contacted Lime requesting deployments and sure ADA access going forward, and data showed that that seemed to be mitigated, following that being less of a trend in the survey data as a concern. As far as ridership goes, Parker will go into the details of ridership, but just a quick overview. We saw nearly 6,000 rides over the course of the summer with over 2,000 unique riders. The best part of this is that the Police Department recorded no incidents or collisions relating to Lime, but did note that there is a general uptick in concern about e-bikes across the East Side in general. For community outreach, the city, in partnership with the Chamber and Woodinville Wine Country, conducted an extensive public outreach program for the Lime Pilot. We appreciate the efforts of our partners in pushing the survey out to their members and staff who tabled out events throughout the summer to get feedback. Lime was featured in a community newsletter, across social media, at the summer concert series, farmer's market, online, and there was even parking stall signage, like the one on the slide, attached in various places throughout the city. Thanks to this outreach, we received 277 survey results. When asked if they did not, if, when asked if they did not use Lime to reach their destination, 60% of respondents said they would have used their personal vehicle. Over 80% of the respondents to the survey were from people who identified as non-Lime riders and Woodinville residents. The remaining 20% of responses were split between businesses and Lime riders. 100% of riders ranked their experience to be three stars or higher, with over 80% ranking it as five stars. Riders said they used the devices primarily for recreation or shopping and dining, and the most, most neighborhood responses came from the Rainwood, Leota neighborhood and town center. About 80% of riders said they used a scooter over a bicycle or a glider. Some additional findings are more related to the concerns. By far, the top three issues were aesthetics, ADA access, and safety. Negative survey responses trended down over time, while positive responses increased. Each month, the largest concern from survey respondents was aesthetics. This is helpful for the working group to take into account in order to find ways to mitigate some of those concerns during the winter and spring before it resumes in 2026. Service is now suspended on the program until next summer, but of course, the community is welcome to continue to provide any additional feedback before then. And I'm happy to take any questions, and then I'm going to pass it over to Parker, who is going to give a deeper dive on ridership data.
Councilmember Evans has a question.
Thank you for pulling this together, and it's not surprising. I do so much work with the business community here. It's, I know that a number of the businesses had some concerns that were addressed pretty quickly. Kimberly Ellertson sent us all an email earlier today that said how impressed she was with how fast they were turning that around. And I know the number one thing that I'm hearing from the business community is, please get parking stalls. Don't just let people be everywhere. So as you're working with the group, I know Kimberly's part of that group, so she'll probably bring that forward, but it is the number one thing I hear from businesses. They like that it's easier for people to get to them, especially businesses that are easily accessible off the trail, but they don't love having them kind of willy-nilly left everywhere. So I think if we could address that piece, we would have a lot more positives.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Are we going to see a map of where people are riding? Perhaps you have that information. I was going to say, it's going to be useful to see where people are starting, where they're ending, if perhaps it's coming from the park and ride and driving, if it's coming from neighborhoods, and I think that would also inform some of the positive responses versus some of the negative responses, as well as seeing what the duration of the ride is, if people are going six blocks, or if they're going a couple of miles. And do you also have any information on? It's impossible to know the age of someone riding a Lime scooter if they have a parent credit card or debit card, but there is anecdotal data of kids riding the scooters that have been concerns with people, so I'd love to hear how you're going to address some of that.
And just to touch on that, councilmember, our survey did ask for the age of the rider, and mind you, the survey responses, you know, it's not completely helpful on that, but I was surprised it was pretty evenly spread out across all age groups that were available to select, but like I said, that's a tough one to get accurate readings on, for sure.
Any more? Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Jared. I do appreciate it. And my apologies in advance, I've got my phone out, but just because I've got a copy of these, so I can keep ahead of where we are at. But my name is Parker Dawson, and I'm our Senior Regional Lead of Government Relations for the Pacific Northwest at Lime. Live just over in Pine Your Square in Seattle, although I always love literally any excuse to come out to Woodinville, so have to make the trek out here this evening. As Jared shared, a little bit as a prelude, we were very excited to have nearly 6,000 trips and over 2,000 unique riders in our opening pilot with the city of Woodinville at Lime. We share in a vision for a future where transportation is shared, accessible, and sustainable for all. And earlier this month, globally, we actually reached an incredible milestone of 1 billion rides, and I'm very grateful and proud that our little corner in the PNW got to be a part of that. So thank you all. Some other exciting top-line items is that we were able to replace through pounds of CO2, which was about 7,800 and change tons of, yeah, of CO2 off the road, equating to 1,463 car trips. And as was shared, our average trip was about one and a half miles, which anecdotally, to answer part of your question, is a little bit longer than we actually see in a lot of major cities. I think that goes to show, especially as we look into some of the heat maps, where trips start versus where they end, shows that people are really riding Lime across Woodinville and even beyond to get to some pretty exciting destinations. Next slide, please. So for this first slide, and please feel free to tell me to pause at any time unless you prefer to keep questions to the end, but we'll be going over some fun numbers with exciting colors, of course. On the left, you'll see average trips, or sorry, overall trips for each month. We averaged a little over 1,250, and again, had nearly 6,000 overall. We see very much in line with expectations around the program that our ridership peaked up into and through August as peak summering season. We had an incredible summer in the PNW after all. And you see a very similar cadence for monthly riders as well, although with that slight change between July and August, normally, we find that when people start using our product and find that it really, it does accommodate their lifestyle, accommodate where they want to go, so they become regular users, whilst we might have some visitors who taper off. We love being able to see those numbers plateau and not necessarily always go up. However, if you go to the next slide, please. You can see here, monthly app opens versus new riders, and this is where those trends are very much reinforced. For monthly app opens, we see a pretty sharp spike after that first month of deployment, where people realized, hey, this is a thing that I can use to go grocery shopping on my commute, to go out for a day with friends, or out dining in the evening. And then we generally saw a bit of a plateau through the summer and a little bit down through September. And then for monthly new riders, as opposed to all unique riders month-to-month, very much expect that to be going down, especially as you leave peak season of a summer, but we were still very excited to see that we were hitting new riders as well, being able to introduce them to the program even throughout September, showing that more people are able to get introduced to the concept of shared micro-mobility. Next slide, please. So this is our first heat map, and I would be more than happy also to follow up with some more close-ups as well, just to answer your question about whether these are coming from a park and ride, et cetera. And I'm sure that these can be shared with you digitally as well. I've sent the images in addition to the full deck. I've sent the images in addition to the full deck over to Jared. But here on the left, you will see trip starts, and on the right, you will see trip ends. What really excites me about this is that particularly for starts, we see that people are riding Lime to get into Woodinville and not just throughout Woodinville. We operate in your next-door Bothell, hoping to, as well as Redmond, hoping to extend that. I was really excited at the East Trails presentation as well. We're hoping to have a launch in Bellevue as early as next year as well in anticipation of FIFA to better connect the entire region for a really, really stellar summer to come. But we were really excited to see people coming into into Woodinville as opposed to just through it. And then the general trends of where people are ending their rides versus starting are fairly typical. It's of what we would expect. You can see that people generally end a ride where they started, one that often points to people using it to get somewhere and then to get back home.
Deputy Mayor Randall has a question.
Yeah, this looks like it'd be a great heat map. It looks like there are numbers inside of these honeycomb values.
I do apologize. I tried today to get the colors to switch, but those numbers refer to the specific number of rides that were started or stopped. Oh, thank you. So yeah, you can see that right in the heart of Woodinville, you know, we get up to 636 rides ending in about a square block or so. Oh, and Jared did actually ask me a question. I forgot to respond to him earlier. The color gradient, it gets yellow fairly fast. This is due to some ridership thresholds that we track internally. And it's a bit like tracking your credit score. Once it gets above a certain threshold, it's all rainbows and unicorns. So we stop increasing the color differential at a certain point.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand this data a little more. In terms of a ride qualifies there, is it every time someone gets off? Would that be a new ride? Or let's say they go to a store, they go shopping, they enter a new ride there. Is there a time thing they'll connect the two together as a single ride? Or they all, every time you use it as a separate for your data here?
Yeah, great question. So if you do formally end your ride and start another one, yes, it will be considered a second ride. However, it won't be considered a new rider. But we do have a couple of different features for being able to do that exact same thing. Just yesterday, I rode Lime over to the grocery store. It's fantastic having a basket on these things. But if a ride or if a vehicle is stationary for 15 minutes or more, the ride will automatically terminate to make sure that people aren't just walking away from a ride and occupying it when somebody else might need it. And then the second thing, at any point during your ride, you are able to, through the app, pause your ride for up to 10 minutes at a time to make sure that if you are running errands, say, picking up a prescription, you can absolutely continue that ride and not worry about the vehicle being taken by somebody else. Of course. And yeah, I think we're ready to go to the next slide, unless anyone has other questions. Cool. And this is another one. And apologies again for how small these dots are. But this map, same map, just a little bit more of a close-up on the right-hand side, shows our app opens. So this is going to be showing initial demands of somebody saying, hey, I just, you know, decided that I want to go to the grocery store. I just got out from lunch with a friend or got off of work. Let me open the app, see where the nearest vehicle is so I can get home. What I don't have for you today, although I would be happy to work with folks on going forward, is crossing this with rides taken as well, trips started. That's often an indicator of how far people are likely to walk to get to a vehicle and what kind of fleet size we need in certain areas to accommodate. We do a lot of rebalancing throughout Woodinville when we've got vehicles here every single day to make sure that there aren't a bunch of vehicles that end up next to one park or in front of somebody's house, but they're actually where they need to be, although it's always helpful. And part of that is even done automatically, but it is always helpful to be able to take a human eye and look at these maps and make sure that we are deploying the right number of vehicles in the right place. I often say that the best billboard we can buy is another vehicle on the road. However, the worst billboard we can buy is a vehicle that goes unused by the side of the road. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit about parking tidiness. Shows you, on the left, you'll see kind of our mandatory parking zone, as well as some parking pins as we move to the right. And then some reminders of how to park and even our capture technology on the far right-hand side. Being able to leverage all of this has shown, I believe it's a 40-some-odd percent increase in compliant parking when we implement all of these things, so it's fantastic. I will definitely take 40% over 0% any day. Not to mention that the capture piece on its own, when we started rolling that out, I believe this year actually, we saw that well over 50% of people, when capture, it's an AI technology that tries to see, hey, are you in the way of, in the middle of a sidewalk in front of a door on an ADA curb ramp? When it's able to detect that, and it only gets better through more use, but when it's able to detect that you are parked incorrectly, it'll say, hey, try again. And we found that well over 50% of people do indeed try again, which is really exciting. These days, it's so easy to ignore things that your phone tells you to do. So it's always fantastic when we're able to get that right. Next slide. Then we've got rules of the road. So you will see on the left, would you actually mind, Jared, zooming in on that left-hand thing? Just that we can take a look at it all. Great opportunity to answer that question about age of riders. So first rule is you must be 18 or older to ride our vehicles. It is the law in Washington that you have to be over 16. We chose 18 or older, just to make sure that we were not needing parental consent to be riding vehicles that are motorized, even though we do have a cap of 15 miles an hour compared to. I know we're starting to see a lot of personal e-scooters and e-bikes on the road that go well above 30 miles an hour. We figure 15 is fast enough. But although we, nearly all of the payment methods that we require would force you to be 18 years or older, definitely not alone in Woodinville, that anecdotally, we are hearing and seeing a lot of kids on scooters, especially over the summer when they were out of school. We have started seeing that trend downward fairly quickly, but that doesn't mean that the issue does not exist. Who knew that kids were getting better at stealing their mom's credit cards? So although we do verify through payment methods and we are able to receive personal reports whenever something like that does happen, particularly if we're able to get a report with the identification code that's on the vehicle or the place and time that a vehicle was, we can track that down fairly easily. Or not fairly easily, but we can track it down. Our biggest constraint right now, to be perfectly candid, is that we have very little interest in this federal environment to be holding, processing, or otherwise taking a look at personally identifying information. I understand that that is complicated or complicating and inconvenient, but it is something that nationally and even globally, Lime has been very firm on. In this administration, if things were different, would be giving a very, very different answer on that. But yeah, without being able to do something like facial recognition, AI scanning, or scanning of your ID, we have been relying largely on outreach to parents, schools, through our app. And again, trying to work with city officials and community to get those reports and make sure that we, of course, at first gently, but even up to finding, suspending, or even banning individuals who are repeat offenders. Safety is our number one priority always. And yeah, again, that's why it's our number one rule. Thank you for allowing me to take so much time on it. Second, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No worries at all. Just going down that list quickly for the rest of them.
Sorry.
No worries. Here, I've actually forgotten. I've got them right in front of me while we're getting back to it. So our second, the second rule that we have listed there is to not park in a way that would block sidewalks, doorways, driveways, or the bus stop. We've got a really fantastic and responsive operations team. Been working with Jared and the entire micro-mobility team all summer to make sure that we are responsive to any reports that we get, removing those vehicles immediately. And again, go back to worst billboard that we could possibly have is a scooter left on the side of the road in your way or a nuisance. We certainly have a strong business interest in fixing those, and we're very proud at our record of doing so. After that is to not ride on sidewalks, except for where the speed limit is 30 miles an hour or greater to protect people's safety, especially when we get into no parking zones, slow zones, or even no operation zones. It can be rather dangerous to have somebody just suddenly slow down or stop on their vehicle when there is traffic involved. But yeah, sidewalk riding, very much a last resort for us. Always try and push our riders to be using bike lane infrastructure and trails. Riding in bike lanes is very much a go-along with that, as well as riding in the street, even if no bike lane is present in low-speed areas. And then our last one's not to ride under the influence, and of course, only one rider per vehicle. I understand, yeah, definitely see a lot of that last one as well. Rider education is something that we do try for in that regard in our initial tests, initial outreach, as well as emails to our riders that go out fairly regularly. And with that, yeah, happy to go to the next slide. Then we've got a, this is kind of a bit of a follow-up for safety, but a how-to-ride tutorial. If any of you have not used Lime yet and were to install the app, open it, and try to start your first ride, you will be met with this. It's really to make sure that you thoroughly understand how our vehicles operate. Even though it's only 15 miles an hour, that doesn't mean there's no motor. We want to make sure, again, that your safety is our first and foremost priority, teaching you how to use the vehicle and then making sure that we help you be aware of all rules of the road and even just common sense recommendations for riding safe. Next slide, please. This is the end of the presentation, and just looking ahead out of 2025, again, we're very proud to get to launch in Woodinville this summer in a pilot, and we are very much looking forward to next year. Four things that are top of mind for us, service area expansion. We're very grateful to operate in all of Woodinville. We're really looking to create a better, expanded, and connected east side and north lake community. Yeah, working to launch in Bellevue, Kirkland, Kenmore, Lake Forest Park. Really make sure that those wins that we saw with seeing people start their rides in Redmond or in Bothell can really continue. And people who travel here for work can use Lime. People who want to go enjoy an afternoon concert or an evening dinner, or even just a weekend with friends can use Lime to do so easily and accessibly. Fleet growth as well, something that we have monitored all summer and hope to continue monitoring is ensuring that we are not over-deploying, of course, but also not restricting us from being able to meet demand. Our worst fear is having somebody open the app and not have a vehicle anywhere near them and then have no way to get home. So we've been very, very fortunate to have such great government partners to keep track of and keep tabs on demand so that we can be deploying just enough vehicles to really service the city. And we're hoping to continue that trend as more people become exposed to the product and more people become comfortable using it to navigate this wonderful place. Third is additional parking locations. You know, really wanting to make sure that on tidiness, on accessibility, we're keeping that in mind. We have found in some studies that we did last year, I believe, that especially in the US, people tend not to walk more than 100 feet to get to a mode of transportation if they don't have to, which is ashamedly low. But hey, we're all Americans. So we're really hopeful that we can work together and find those additional parking places so that it can be a convenient option for everybody. And then last, just looking at a longer pilot for 2026, we were really excited to be part of the summer peak season for tourism. Although inasmuch as we love serving tourists, we love serving the people who live here, work here, and play here year-round even more. But with that, happy to take any other questions. Thank you so much for giving me so much time.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the data that we have from this first-year pilot. It's always helpful to see what is working, what is not working, what can we improve? What is the community value? What are the riders' experience? Just a few comments. I think that contract with King County to get trail usage is just really going to be key. I know I heard and the Public Spaces Commission heard feedback from people who really wanted to use it on the Sammamish River Trail, and it was just very inconsistent whether or not that ride would actually go through or not. So that would be one of the key pieces for me. I commend you that we had no Lime scooter accidents in the city this summer. That is certainly not the case with privately-owned e-bikes. And so I think that there is an opportunity with the relaunch of the pilot in the spring of next year to do some community outreach and safety engagement, not only with Lime scooters, but with the privately-owned e-bikes and scooters we're having in the community and just generally talking to people about where and how to ride them safely. I think because you have such a great or zero incident rate in the city, that some of your policies can be used as models for how we can talk to our communities about their own private e-bikes. And along that same line of kind of an introductory event, we did have some requests from community members for someone to actually stand by them and show them how to open the app and connect to the scooter and get on and ride. And so I do think that there is an opportunity for some of that real hands-on engagement here in the community of getting together with residents and saying like, this isn't so scary. This is how you use them. I will note that the senior center that we're talking about is right along the trail, and they are great users of typical bikes. And so this could be another mode of transportation for their populations. And then I would like, I would really like to see that data that you discussed where you're cross-referencing where people are opening the app and where their rides are starting to just see how far people are willing to go to get to a scooter or a bike. Because I think that information would be very informative for those parking corrals. You know, where, how far away from those centers of usage can we have these parking corrals and still be successful with getting people to ride and park appropriately? So thank you. I appreciate that.
Would you mind if I make a few comments?
Absolutely.
Cool. Thank you, and thank you for those questions. First, yeah, totally agree on the King County agreement. I actually have one in a never-ending saga of meetings with them tomorrow. With any luck, that will be coming online soon, well before the pilot restarts next year. On safety tips, I actually, when I first joined Lime earlier this summer, I, or I guess I should say in the summer now that we're officially into spooky season in the fall. But one of the first things that I did for the company was help create a lot of rider safety tips in several different languages that we distributed to community groups and the government over in Seattle. I'd be happy to localize them for Woodinville and get them in your hands as well for distribution. And for demos, we love doing them, do them all the time. Would be happy to work with Jared and others to find opportunities to get folks out here and introduce folks to our bikes and scooters.
Thank you.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So when we had this presentation earlier, we had talked about a discount program that Lime scooter offers to people. And I was wondering if you had any data about who took advantage of that program? If you had an idea of how many people who were in that program are responsible for the rides versus the people who are not taking advantage of the program? I just wanted to see how far across the economic spectrum people have been using Lime and maybe they don't know about the program, ways to increase knowledge of how to take advantage of a reduced ride program. And maybe if we had some outreach materials for people so that they could take advantage of that, I think you would see more ridership as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And you're talking about specifically low-income ridership?
That's correct. We had heard before that there was a discount per ride. It was, for some reason, 15% comes into mind, but I don't remember the particular number. And I know it was available, but I don't know how many people either know about it or have taken advantage of it. So maybe you have better insight.
Not off the top of my head, but I'll be happy to follow up. In addition to our Lime Access Program for low-income individuals, we also have a Lime Pass Program, which allows you to purchase bundled minutes at a pretty steeply discounted rate. And anybody has access to that. In the P and W, we really love pushing that, probably against our business interests. The greater Puget Sound area has one of the highest use rates of our Lime Pass in the country and even the world, at around 40% of our users using it. And most actually use it for our maximum bundled minute offering. use it for our maximum bundled minute offering of two hundred and eighty minutes for over thirty days, which really shows that people are finding value to go on their everyday commutes. Thank you for the questions.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Great points from everybody here on the dais. But one thing that I noticed, it's less of a question, more of a commentary, is us actually having the Lime bikes and scooters in town gave us an opportunity to see how woefully under bike laved we are, and how we don't have proper bike infrastructure, and that puts people on the sidewalks. So it's definitely up to us to, to consider that. I appreciate the ability to actually get a view of that, and as we start to build out the East Rail, we know that we'll have additional people who are on bikes and walking, and this will really push us towards being that bikeable, walkable city that we want to be. So definitely continue to send this data, so we can see what's being utilized, and this will give us points where we need to actually improve our bicycle infrastructure.
Happily.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Business item number nine, City Council Consideration of Adopting Resolution Supporting or Opposing North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Proposition Number One.
All right, thank you, there's no formal presentation for this item. Earlier in the meeting, you heard a presentation from NPRSA on what this levy entails. Per Washington state law, a city council can take action to express a collective decision or to vote upon a resolution, or to support or oppose a ballot proposition, so long as two conditions are met, that being any required notice of the meeting includes the title and number of the ballot proposition, and members of the council or members of the public are afforded an approximately equal opportunity for the expression of an opposing view. Proper notice, noticing for taking a position on the levy has taken place, and now council will need to allow for equal opportunities for those in favor and those opposed to the item to have their public comment heard. Following this, your agenda packet includes language for a suggested motion.
Any discussion? Anybody want to kick this off? Councilmember Evans, thank you.
Well, I already went on the record as being pro, going over and seeing the senior center in action, taking some of our residents who weren't aware of it over there to have a tour and to discover it, and then hear what an amazing resource it is for them to access, knowing that people don't have to join as members, they can go access things there. It's, it's a wonderful resource. I know we had the doctor who came and talked about the, the day programming, which is what I was going to talk about at this time, so I'm so glad you came and talked about it, because I've talked to many caregivers who say that this is a bright spot in a really difficult time. Carrying for a loved one twenty-four seven who is having cognitive issues through dementia or Alzheimer's or whatever is, is very isolating and difficult, and I have heard many, many stories from people who said this was the place that they could go to five days a week, get support from people within, who are dealing with similar things in their own lives, get support from staff, but also their loved one could get enrichment and get out, and it gets them out of their house and has something to look forward to. There are so many programs that happen at the senior center, but I think that one is the one that sticks out the most, because I've seen in my own family what a toll it can take on caregivers if they don't have an outlet. And I, I just encourage everybody to go take a look at the senior center, it's a really amazing place, and the staff there is really fantastic, and if you want to really have fun, go on a Wednesday pie day and get a piece of pie, and sit down and talk to some of the resident, or some of the, some of the users of their, residents of our area, but users of the senior center, thank you.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. I will also go on record and say that I support Proposition One, and I support this council coming out in support of Proposition One. Just to address some of the things we've heard this evening, the North Shore Senior Center is the second largest senior center in the country, and the last few months have seen the highest usage the center has ever seen. It's been the busiest summer and the busiest fall at the senior center, because our communities are growing, and they're changing and diversifying, and the senior center is working actively to reach out to those members of our community who need not only support and services, but that sense of connection and community. The previous levy has done amazing work getting the buildings repaired, and this new proposition includes money to take those additional important repairs, like the elevator and other internal systems that are just necessary for this building to function, as well as that maintenance piece, which will help free funds for the senior center programming. So these were public buildings that the public invested in for the purpose of serving the North Shore Senior Center, and this levy serves to continue to keep those in good repair, to meet the need that we as a community saw in having this senior center. And I can offer just a brief comparison to the Senior Activity Center in Shoreline in Lake Forest Park, which does not have a building of its own, and they have to rent, they're renting space from the Shoreline School District, and so as their rent increases, their programs have to take a cut, and that is something that we don't have to deal with here in the North Shore, because our community has come out and support these levies, and it is a very small levy in compared to some, and it is very important for our community.
Councilmember Best Kemel.
So I said it before, and I'd say it again, I mean, the, the buildings are the important thing that keep the senior center going, but funding for the senior center is, or I would suggest people who are also in support of this proposition, vocally support both, because supporting one doesn't mean you're supporting the other. And I think it's the programming that makes the, the levy so attractive. We know the great programs that happen there, I remember in twenty nineteen, when the first levy came to council, and there were people who were just shocked, there's no way you're going to pass this levy, and by a miracle, this levy passed, and the programming has been allowed to increase, it was a lifeline during COVID, I remember having meetings, all of my meetings were remote when I was on the committee, and the work was still done, and the senior center was still doing its work, but the senior center building can't be filled unless there's funding to also support the senior center itself. So I would suggest to everyone here, not only should we support Proposition One, we also should vocally support the senior center programming, so that both of these can go forward in tandem, because having a building without a senior center to fill it, well, that's just heartless, we really need to focus on having both. So I am enthusiastically in favor of Prop One, the people who are in charge of the day-to-day minutia of coming up with all of the information on how are we going to go forward and what repair is coming first, there's a clear vision of that, and more importantly, we need to have a clear vision of what that space can be, so that we can give the senior center the opportunity to expand the health and wellness center. I know that of all things, podiatry is one of the biggest things that people look for as they get older, feet are terrible when you're young, and it just becomes harder and harder to do things like trim your toenails when you get older, and something as simple as that is what the senior center provides. So let's support the buildings, but let's also support the organization that makes those programs possible.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, you had a model motion?
I do have a model motion. Question, this is Proposition One, Resolution six six seven.
It, it's Proposition One, obviously is the ballot proposition, the resolution is six six seven is ours.
All right, thank you, wanted to make sure. I move to adopt Resolution six six seven, supporting Prop One concerning NPRSA tax levy.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject.
Go ahead, Mr. Ganson.
You haven't had any, anyone speak against the proposition? It may be that nobody on council is inclined to do so, in that case, I would encourage you to call for comments from the public that might be in opposition to the proposition, to ensure that you're in compliance with the statute that's quoted in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ganson, is anybody in the audience that wish to speak against the Proposition One? Anyone? I don't see anybody. Councilmember Taylor.
Not necessarily speaking against it, but do we have any members of the board that must recuse themselves from a vote? It's a question for legal.
Well, there's a fact question there that I don't know the answer to.
I can ask, is anybody on the council feel they need to recuse themselves for any reason, any conflict of interest, anything? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Is anyone on the board of, on the board?
I don't believe that would be a disqualifier, but. Okay, one more time, anybody want to speak against the proposition? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, did I get a second? I did, okay, perfect, motion and second, Deputy Mayor Randolph, you have the floor.
I believe the presentation that we got and the facilities that this provides within our area kind of speak for themselves in what they bring in terms of activity and for the region, so I think I am definitely for this, that's why we didn't have anybody necessarily present against it, and I'm excited to push this, this forward.
Anybody else like to speak toward the motion?
I, I'd like to say a few things, I think, you know, in my previous career and, and as an EMT, you know, we would, we would go and see a lot of elderly people, and I, I can tell you, community spaces like this are really important. We witnessed during the pandemic that isolation and loneliness is really a danger to health, and this is a great facility that brings people together, it's a great community to get people moving, socialize activities, work in your body and your brain and your social aspects, and so I'm really in favor of, of this facility. It, it, I, I've spoken to many people in Woodinville that use it, love it on a regular basis, it was spoken earlier that we have now have ability to people to sustainably and easily go on the trail and get there, and I think that's, that's a great aspect of this. And also, you know, we have an opportunity with NPRSA to address another demographic on a, a younger audience for some of the same reasons, so I'm very much in favor of this, and I'd like to see council pass this. Let's, I didn't have anybody opposed, so let's, I'll take, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Oppose.
The ayes have it, six to one, thank you very much. Business item number ten, Study Session Twenty Twenty Five Thirty-One, North Shore School District Capital Facilities Plan, Mr. Grumbach.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I have Denise from the North Shore School District who is going to present their Twenty Twenty Five Capital Facilities Plan. I do want to note that she's coming up here, this is just a study session for them to present and for the council to ask questions. We do plan to bring back to you at the next November meeting, a discussion about the school impact fees.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grumbach, and do you want me to use this to advance the slides? Okay, I will do my best.
Just, just, I'm sorry, real quick, what meeting did you say is coming back to us?
The November, the next meeting, I think it's November fourth.
November fourth, okay.
Yeah, we'll bring an ordinance back to you with the school impact fees and discuss the school impact fees in more detail then.
Thank you, sorry, go ahead.
So Denise DeFarn with Pacifica Law Group, and I am outside legal counsel to the North Shore School District and have worked with them for a number of years on their capital facilities plans and impact fees. Dree Ralph is with me, she is the Executive Director of Support Services and Capital Projects for the district, and we are happy to be back again this year to present the district's Twenty Twenty Five Capital Facilities Plan update. Walking through for you, just a, a broad overview of the different elements of the capital facilities plan, one of the most important things the district looks at every year is enrollment projections, and as you may recall from our previous last couple of years, the post-COVID enrollment projections have been settling for a bit and really have started to stabilize in the North Shore School District. The district uses an outside demographer to prepare their enrollment projections, and that demographer looks at a variety of factors, including birth rates, enrollment trends over the last several years, development data and growth projections from the various jurisdictions that this district serves, which includes two counties and three cities. And based upon that, the current enrollment projections show that the district will grow by about seven percent over the next six years, that is the planning period that the district looks to for purposes of their capital facilities plan. The projections are a bit stepped back from what we saw in Twenty Twenty Four, but there is a look that that will soon stabilize and start to go up in the long term going forward. And importantly, the growth is at all grade levels and throughout all areas of the school district. The next factor that we look at is what is, what is in the district currently in terms of their capital facilities and really providing that complete inventory, and so here you see the map of the school district showing where the various school locations are located, and this district, of course, has twenty elementary schools, six middle schools, and then four choice schools, including two comprehensive high schools, one K-12 Alternative Learning Academy, and one early childhood center. The other thing that you will observe, of course, when you drive around and look at the schools, is that there are portables on many of the school sites. The district has been very intentional over the last several bond cycles to start replacing those portables, removing them from their campuses and housing students in permanent facilities, that's a work in progress, they have done a lot of good work to reduce the portables, there still are some that are existing at schools throughout the district, and they are an important tool for helping to address capacity needs as new growth occurs and as those projects come online. Speaking of projects coming online, the district is continuing and moving quite a bit forward with implementing the Twenty Twenty Two Capital Bond projects that the voters so generously supported. That package really focused on a modernization, replacement, and expansion, so not looking at brand new schools, but looking at existing schools, making sure that that capacity and those facilities are up to standard currently, and that there is additional capacity provided as a part of the building modernization. So that, those projects have been occurring at all grade levels, focusing, of course, on the high school, the middle school that I think is most familiar to you all, Leota Middle School, and then several elementary schools throughout the district. So all of those have capacity adding features to them, as well as modernization of the facilities, and you will see that many of them are already open and serving in this, this fall, new students, and others will soon be coming online as well. So the district is advancing quite nicely in terms of getting those projects opened after a lot of activity, particularly this summer. So turning then to the next component of the capital facilities plan, and that is determining whether or not the district is eligible for school impact fees, and if so, what does that calculation look like? So of course, school impact fees are authorized by state law, and also by your code, and they are specific to growth-related capacity improvements. So it's not just any school district capital project, but it has to be a project where the district has demonstrated a growth-related need. In other words, they've shown enrollment growth throughout the planning period, they've identified that their existing capacity is insufficient to address that growth, and they have a project planned that will accommodate the growth-related need. Impact fees apply only to new residential development units, residential units are what impacts school capacity, and they are determined based upon a formula that identifies a proportionate share, so it looks at each dwelling unit, how it, how the students expected to reside in that dwelling unit will impact school facilities, and what is that cost per dwelling unit. And then finally, impact fees cannot be used to address existing deficiencies in the system, can't be used to address non-capacity needs, and by law- And then finally, impact fees cannot be used to address existing deficiencies in the system, can't be used to address non-capacity needs, and by law, they cannot be the sole source of funding. There needs to be other public funds available, and that typically is, the largest share comes from bond and capital levies. There is also a share that comes from state school construction assistance program funding, which the district is eligible for receiving. This district has built on over the last several years, the 2022 capacity projects that were funded by the voters, and of course, that is projects at all grade levels. And so they use that for purposes of their impact fee planning and showing growth continuing at all grade levels, that capacity is needed to serve future growth. So you'll see again here, these are the projects that were funded as a part of the 22 bond. They are also the projects that are capacity related for purposes of impact fee analysis. And then finally, turning to the actual fee calculation. And so this shows you what the current fee is in your city and what the proposed fee is based upon the district's 2025 Capital Facilities Plan. A couple of things to note here. First, the fees that are shown here are discounted by 50%. So they are calculated, credits are applied in the formula, and then they are cut in half to get to the fee proposed and recommended for the city. The city of Woodinville several years ago asked the district to provide a fee for apartment units, that is, two bedrooms or more, and not have a fee for those smaller units less than two bedrooms. So that methodology has continued to be followed. A couple of notes, the multifamily fee has increased this year, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is that the 2025 Capital Facilities Plan reflects actual construction costs. The district now is at a point where they know what those projects are going to cost. There is also an additional project in this capital facilities plan that affects that fee. And then most importantly, for the multifamily fee, the student generation rate has doubled in the last year. And that student generation rate is what really drives the impact per dwelling unit, because that anticipates how many students on average are expected to reside in a dwelling unit. And what the district is seeing with current data is there are fewer students residing in single-family homes than there were previously. There are some fewer students residing in townhomes than there were previously, but there are significantly more students residing in those apartment units. And so that is driving up that fee in a way that's not reflected with the other fees.
Can we go back to that slide before? So I don't know, the percentage just popped out of my head, but that's, that's a pretty significant increase in that fee, which caught my attention. And when, when I first saw this, maybe about a month ago, I noted, I noticed that Snohomish County fees were not increased to that extent. So I'm wondering if you could address that, because that, that's, that's a tough number to swallow, percentage-wise.
Yeah, so Snohomish County has a biennial update cycle. They adopted an updated capital facilities plan last year, and then they will, starting in 2026, go through an update process for the fee effective January 1, 2027. So they are in an off year in terms of update, and the way their county code works is they hold the fee steady for that off year until they update the following year. So that's why you are seeing a difference between what is currently in place in Snohomish County and what will stay in place until they update again in the fall of 2026.
Does anybody, and maybe this is an answer to a question for you or staff, does anybody carve out anything for affordable units? I mean, this fee makes affordable units tougher to achieve. Do we have the ability, or does anybody carve out anything for affordable units?
I can, I can answer that, and then of course, I'll let staff add to anything. Your code does provide a exemption from impact fees for low and moderate, what's called low and moderate income tied to specific parameters. So those units are exempt from the payment of school impact fees, and I'll pause if staff wants to correct or add.
No, that, that's my understanding as well. Okay. Councilmember Best Campbell?
So we had a presentation, I think at our last meeting regarding development and multifamily generation, and it's looking very bleak that there's anything in the pipeline. Are these projections with the understanding that you're following the same sort of bleak guidelines that we're looking at, in that there could be almost no construction in at least the next year? Are these numbers reflective of knowledge of that?
These numbers are, and, and the capital facilities plan more generally is reflected of current development data. And the data that the district has is that more so than anything, single-family housing is being stepped back within the North Shore School District. There still is in the pipeline that the district's demographer looked at, townhome and multifamily stacked unit development. So the district's plan takes that into consideration. It doesn't necessarily affect these specific figures, because it really looks to, it is not based on how many do they expect in terms of total units, but it's looking at if there's just one unit, here is what the cost would be to house a student in that one unit.
Any other questions? Is that it? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Business side number 11, award of agreement to Novo Global for Pilot School Safety Zone, or Zone Safety Camera Program. Mr. Souza? Or Joshua?
There we go. Thank you so much. Well, it's my pleasure tonight to talk about the Schools on Safety Camera Program and the Award of the Agreement. So as background to this, and we've been working on this project for well over a year now. We've had quite a lot of conversation regarding the program policy implementation that started earlier this summer, and then that led into a robust engagement platform, which now has brought us, which ultimately had a adoption of ordinance related to the enforcement of that. And now we're at the point of looking at possibly awarding of agreement to Novo Global for schools on safety cameras. At this point, it's also a good idea to take a look at some of the highlights of our program, and the co-mlive effort that that's looked at. A big part of this has been designed to do equitable enforcement. So a key aspect of this is that enforcement is tied to the vehicles, not the driver or passenger identity. No personally identifiable data is, is really collected. It's just the vehicle license plate information when an infraction is possibly occurring. And another key aspect of this is it's really behavior change over revenue generation. We adopted this graduated fine structure based on the severity of speeding. That way, it would be tied toward trying to reduce the actual speeding within these corridors. Another important consideration was financial equity as well as community reinvestment. And so this really helps reduce penalties for those receiving public assistance. We had, had specific measures within, in the ordinance for that. We also tied program revenues directly to the reinvestment in, in safety improvements within this corridor. And that is, of course, after the, the program costs are captured. Then finally, we had both during the program and policy conversations, we had intense outreach and engagement that helped guide this process, as well as we had the equity study that, that helped inform a lot of what we've been discussing. But even as, if we decide to move forward with implementation into the next steps, we will, this will continue throughout that pathway. So part of that is in continuing with multilingual and graphical outreach to help explain program information, particularly since the equity study identified several stakeholders and user groups could benefit from having a more cohesive approach to outreach. So with that kind of frame set in mind, we did go out to bed in September in 2025. By the submission deadline, we received two complete and responsive proposals. A total of three were actually submitted to the city. Novo Global is the preferred vendor based on their experience, their local presence, their robust implementation they've done in several nearby cities, as well as cost, and also a city interview with, with both city staff and Kirkland Court. To kind of walk through a little bit about, about their process, they had a few different options for, for costs. Our particular system would require two camera systems to cover both directions on the 195th corridor. The recommended plan includes a prorated discount for the times when the, the camera is not in operation. This is actually structured in a way so that's a fixed fee throughout the, the program term, instead of working individually on a month-to-month basis to calculate it. Over the two-year pilot program, the anticipated cost is, is around $218,143. And that's reflects the two, cost of two programs, or two cameras within that program. And it's all-inclusive, which is another important thing. So that includes the equipment, the installation, their assistance with operations, maintenance, their component for the, the enforcement, where they do vendor verification of, of infractions, but also training and outreach too. They have quite a robust aspect on both of those elements as well. Other program costs associated with this will be with Snohomish County. That's for potential signal cap and support or electrical for the flashing beacons that would go alongside this program. You would have driver-activated beacons that would show what your speed limit is as you're going, so that you're very well aware of what, what's going on, when the enforcement is potentially taking place. We also have budgeted for our Woodinville Police to review the, the potential fractions after the vendor gets their, their opportunity to take a look at it. Then it comes to us to take, to verify that it actually occurs before we actually issue the infraction. Then we also include outreach. This is within the program budget, but it is approximately $2,500, and that is for that multilingual support, the flyers that we've been doing, the, the post boards, the various outreach that we've done throughout the summer, as well as what we're continuing, anticipating to continue throughout this. The biggest part that's unknown at this point in time is the Kirkland Municipal Court costs. Right now, we've had several conversations with, with Kirkland Court. We, we initiated those conversations well before the proposal went out, because we wanted to take their considerations in, into the proposal, or into our RFP and solicitation process. And as they were evaluating the proposals, as they came back in, and, and they were looking at this, they came to us and, and noted that there will be some element of cost recovery for, for their time and effort as associated to administering the program at a court level and dealing with infractions that may go to appeals process or may, may move up through the court system on theirs. So that final cost for this is still pending. We, and we hope to have that soon. When that is, if and when that comes through, will have, of course, be negotiated with staff. If and when that comes through, we'll have a budget amendment to be brought forward with this, the associated interlocal agreement with, with Kirkland Court. So to kind of sum up all of that information, here's what our budget table roughly looks like. Where we anticipated initial costs with, with different aspects like the service fee or the equipment themselves. We initially anticipated purchasing two systems outright. In this case, it's going to be more of a lease-own, lease, not lease-own, vendor lease to us for the equipment. So that's a cost that's not necessarily captured that we're able to then use for the other project expenditures. The total minus Kirkland Court of this is a net saving so far of $120,498. I wanted to highlight a few technical capabilities, but I will turn this over to our Novo Global here in a second to, to do a much better job than I can on this. But there's a few parts that I wanted to address. The biggest is the visible flash system. With what we've received, their typical platform includes a visible flash system to indicate when an infraction occurs. For our system, however, it's only going to be active during school hours and daylight because of, of the hours that we discussed having the infraction time. And so we think that will be a minimized residential impact to it. The key thing that in our conversations that we had that was helpful is by having a flash system, it provides real-time driver feedback. So one of the things that could potentially happen when you don't have a flash system is that an infraction occurs, driver isn't aware of it, two weeks later, they get a, a, a notice in the mail. It does have all the information, their images and the video associated with what occurred. So it happened, but they're, they're not expecting it. So this would be one way that we could also provide real-time driver feedback that lets them know, uh-oh, I made a mistake. That said, we also have the ability right now, we're still in discussion, to potentially not use the flash system with, with Novo Global. So that's still something we have the opportunity to discuss. The other part of this is the robust data and security protocols, and this, I will let them go into much more detail, but to be a very high level, they're compliant with both public disclosure and privacy laws. Because they have robust experience both in Washington State and elsewhere, they understand the differences between the multiple sets of data that you have associated with the program. So you have contractual data, which is fully public. You have possible infraction data, which while it's being administered in the court, isn't necessarily public. And then you have everything in which Washington State restricts the use of. And then you have their intellectual property data, which is their actual background information and their app development. So they're well familiar with how to separate and understand those different kind of buckets of, of data. And they've also provided information to how they can be a commitment to legal defensibility. So with that, let me introduce you to Novo Global. I do have on our, I'll pop this, this off so, so Carlos can share his part of the presentation. But also while he's getting that set up, I'd like to introduce you to Heidi, who is our local area representative. Heidi here is the Business Development Director for the West Coast. She's, would be our local representative for, for Novo Global. And with us today remotely, we also have Carlos Laufstedt, who's the President and CEO of Novo, who will help explain a lot more of their technical expertise, and also walk us through some of their certifications that they go through for data, how they train to, to make sure that their staff is capable of, of handling this, this data, and some other questions that we heard both from public, as well as in previous council discussions, to help kind of frame and inform what this process would look like. So with that, Heidi?
Thanks, Josh. Council, thank you very much for having me tonight. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. I grew up and still live on the east side, so having another program on the east side means a great deal to me. I am a retired Seattle police officer and detective, and I currently have high school students in the Lake Washington School District. So school zone programs are very near and dear to my heart. Novo Global, just a little bit of background, is a company that we, that was started in 2010 here in the United States, based in Florida. I live here, and this is well past my bedtime, so I have to use cards to refresh my memory here. But what makes us different is that all of our programs in Washington State, and I'm going to share those with you in a second, are unique and different. They're customized to suit the unique needs and requests of every single city and community. Here's the cities that we've had since I started this company, or started with this company in 2018. And no two programs are alike, different levels of integrations, different customizations and requests for unique features. And every single one of them are, have proven results that are measurable, and we help build reports to show those results. So how we, next slide. The, the way that we build a program, a successful program, is through the best possible team. And every one of these people has extensive 10 to 20 years, some of those lower pictures are a little bit older, but, so they look young here, but we all have 10 to 20 years in the traffic safety industry. We pride ourselves on being responsible, responsive, and agile as our customers' needs evolve and change. From policies and procedures with your program manager to construction and installation with our project manager for construction, Patrick Walters there. We, need to read that slide. Oh, and with the court integrations with Kirkland, this is all, these are all things that we've been experienced in doing with all 14 programs in Washington State. Different levels of integrations, different court integrations. So we just know that all of those programs have measurable, significant results. We're talking 80% to 90% reductions in dangerous driving behavior and speeding. And we will help present those results to you as this program evolves. It's also interesting, one of the things that we like to do is reports on residents versus non-residents. I know that 195th is probably all going to be, it's cut through traffic, right? But there's a good chance that a great percentage of the traffic that goes through that area will be non-residents trying to get to work. That's always an interesting perspective to share with your community. And now I'd like to introduce Carlos Lofstad. Any questions about who we are and what we do here? That's all we do is traffic safety, by the way. We don't also build widgets and gadgets and other lighting solutions, but we just do traffic safety.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
So Carlos Lofstad is my boss. He's also the founder and CEO of Novoa Global. And coming from Sweden, he was part of the founding movement of Vision Zero. And Carlos has always worked in the traffic safety industry. So without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce Carlos Lofstad. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Well, thank you very much for giving us the time. Yes, we present to you from our side, we got a list of questions and really, just to be respectful for your time, we're just trying to get straight to them and trying to answer them. So it is different areas. One of them was in regard to accuracy and calibration. I know your team have been reviewing the proposals on what we offer, but this is just an overview of the capabilities of the system. We are using today what is called a 3D radar, which measures in three different dimensions, traffic. And beside that it is just measuring the Doppler speed, which is extremely accurate, we have also continued secondary speed verification. What that means is really that we're measuring a vehicle many times per second, every 50 milliseconds. And during those periods, we are able to measure the displacement and time of displacement. And with distance divided with time, we're able to have a secondary speed. And this secondary speed verification, we are verifying that the main speed is accurate all the way while the vehicle is passing the measurement zone. Besides that, I'm just going to show you in a second, yes, visually. We have a third level of time over distance calculation, that it is some green lines on a picture. Then lastly, in regard to the calibration, the system does self-calibrate every day and will report if anything will be wrong. Besides that, we fulfill any state law in regard to yearly calibration, and that's an external simulator calibration of the speed that it is done on all our systems in Washington State. So just to look a little bit more in detail, to the right, it looks very small, but what it really shows is when we're targeting a vehicle and measuring the vehicle over the measurement zone, you will see that we're measuring the vehicle many times. So on this specific vehicle, you see that we have a total count of 186 times. That means that 186 times, we have measured the speed of the vehicle, the displacement in distance, and then time of displacement, and been able to calculate the secondary speed. And then, as I was mentioning before, I don't know if you can see it on the screen, but where the vehicle is, you will see that it is a green line. That screen line calculates visually where the vehicle should be on the first and then later on, on the second picture. This is just to make it very easy for the officer that's approving the violation. It's advanced physics, but at the same time, very easy for them to see that the secondary speed verification matches the vehicle's speed from the radar in regard to the Doppler speed. So this is just to go over a little bit in regard to accuracy and how we're proud ourselves of having a very reliable system. Our technology have never been challenged and lost in court because of the technology itself. And we are proud to have zero errors, which is very unique in the market. Other questions that were dominant from your team was in regard to data authorization, license use. And just to get just a generic overview, some was a little bit detailed in the type of compliance. I just must say that it is some important things for you to understand. This is your program. So many of the programs and the rules are based on what you want, how you want us to operate. We never share any data with any external party if it's not authorized by the city. But then you have some federal state laws and motor vehicle laws that we need to comply with. Today, we have access, for example, with DOL, with the Washington State Department of Licensing, just to get direct DMV access from them. The data in that respect, DMV data belongs to them. We have our recipient agreement with them. And just to provide or grant access to any of our customers, the customer needs to sign a sub-recipient agreement just so we are able to provide the information. DOL takes very seriously anything to do with data security. So they're auditing us every year, and we need to comply with all their requirements in regard to private identifiable information, which is called PPI, just as one organization that requires that. So the data, all the data from the program, you own it. The DMV data is owned by the different DMV, but all the IP, of course, is our ownership. Then beside DOL, which is only for Washington State, if you have vehicles from other states, you need access to the rest of the DMVs around the US. NG, Novoa Global, is proud to be a strategic partner of Anlets. Anlets is the national law enforcement agency that connect all the DMV in the country. And that goes through police hubs from all the states, police agencies. So every state police agency is part of the board of Anlets and grant access to approved strategic partners. So Anlets, in general terms, they follow all the requirements that CGS, FBI require for any law enforcement, the same requirements we need to comply with. So we are audited also and certified by Anlets in regard to security in general. And then we have also, beside that, we are audited by Florida DMV. And we also have SOC 2 Type 1 and SOC 2 Type 2 audits.
Mr. Lofstad, Deputy Mayor Randolph has a question.
Hey, Mr. Lofstad. Thanks so much for the explanation of data and compliance here. My question is related specifically to that bullet point where you talk about definitive, reliable compliance. The question that I have is can you differentiate compliance from access to that data? Because our, I guess I'll say my concern is not necessarily around compliance with the data collection and access, but it's more around access to that data for people who are not part of Woodinville law enforcement.
Well, access is limited to what access you want to provide. So in the beginning of the program and within the business rule that we will provide you, the city will provide who will have access to data from your program. Then beside that, the only entity or persons that will have access to the data, it is Novoa Global. And Novoa Global fulfilling all the requirements from CGS and SOC and so on. CGS, I would say, is the hardest in regard to data access and security. Required to have a fully background check through FBI and Interpol, all employees that have access to the data. They need to be CGS Level 4 trained. So it is very limited, the access to the data from our perspective.
Got it. Thanks for that. That helps clarify it a bit.
Yeah. And all the data and access is also audited by Anlets, obviously, you're aware of that.
Councilmember Wes Campbell?
So the bullet point you have about a sub-recipient agreement to access the Department of Licensing data, does that mean that the city has to engage in a separate contract with that entity? And I guess the follow-on question I have that's to the meat of the issue. If the DMV divulges information based on the violation data that the city provided, what is the reporting requirement to the individual whose data was reported or leaked?
Okay, two questions. Well, the DOL and sub-recipient agreement is you need to do a sub-recipient agreement with us. We are the recipient, and you will be the sub-recipient. So for DOL to allow us to provide to anybody access to the data, then you need to understand the sensitivity of DMV data. So really speaking, what you comply is really what you normally do. Most cities have some kind of access from DOL already, but DOL is very picky in that if we provide the data, we also need to have that agreement. So really, it's no hocus-pocus, it's just that exactly what you're concerned of, DOL is concerned of. That DMV data is not that you can just release in a public request. They're very restrictive how the information is used. That was the first question.
But what is the reporting requirement if some of that data is either given to an outside agency, for example, or if the data is leaked? How would the individual be notified? Would they be notified through the Department of Motor Vehicles? Or would they be notified through your company? That there was data of theirs that was shared outside of processing one of these infractions?
It depends on the level of data. But according to our contract with DOL, we need to notify any breach to DOL. And then it's going to be an action plan depending on the severity of the breach itself.
Just one more question. So there's breach, which I understand is unauthorized. But if there is a warrant served from, let's say, a federal agency, would DMV also be notified of a warrant that's being executed as well as a data breach?
According to the contract, no. Not according to the contract with DOL.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yeah, I'll wait till we get to this point, but I think we are quickly going to get into Attachment B. I want to go through that with a level of detail, but I do want to make sure we have an opportunity to visit all the points that have been brought up.
Any other questions? Continue, please.
Okay. Yeah, so and in that respect also, this is a much smaller, the sub-recipient agreement is a little bit longer contract. But even Anlets required to get is an easy process because that goes through your police department, and they need to just be vetted by the state agency. So in this case, you're going to go and a letter over to Anlets. Anlets need to send it to the state agency for approval so your police agency doesn't have any problems with the state agency, and they can have access to the data. So that's really a letter that needs to be approved just to get access to DMV data in all the rest of the US. So data security. I already meant touch some of these things. And I know that not, if you're not working with law enforcement, you might not know what Anlets is and how it operates. But this is just a short description that, well, NG is a strategic partner of Anlets. Anlets board are members for all state law enforcement agency. I even, you can go online to their website and see all the different representatives. I just pull out the one that is for Washington State, for WASP. And what they, you need to comply with just to get access to the data, the CSN City information. And you need to comply with the FBI CGS requirements, which is on 253 pages long, as long as last time I saw, with requirements in regard to encryption, address, in transit, background check, firewalls, multiple layers of security in regard to the service. You cannot access the service directly. Where the data need to be located, any risk mitigation, what happens in case of a breach, type of training. So it's a long, long list, and I'm not going to just bore you with all the requirements. But that is a very solid audits that are done on a yearly and every three years by Anlets, and that's in regard to data usage. So they just do audits on logs of how we use the data. So it is used for the right reason. And then also bigger audits in regard to the security. So we still comply with all the factors that we were complying from the very beginning. And besides that, I believe I mentioned already, we are audited by Anlets. We have also passed through SOC 2 Type 2 and SOC 2 Type 1 in the beginning, of course. And those are more yearly audits that are done. We have all the encryptions that are required by CGS FBI requirements. It is AES 256, transit address that is required. And of course, we need to comply with all state affairs security requirements, especially when it comes to DMV data. The retention, one of the questions was in regard to the retention. Retention, you have certain state laws that stipulate how long time you can keep data if it hasn't been an offense, it has been an issue to citation, or if have been adjudicated. And those are different levels that we need to comply law-wise. But then the city can have their own business rule to be more stringent in regard to data retention. And there it is, we want to apply your business rule in regard to how long you want us to keep the data. The solution technically is from you, from our client's perspective, is a cloud solution. But we have ownership and control of all our servers. So some of the servers are in Arizona at Anlets facility, and some are in Orlando. So all the data is in the US under our control. And of course, all the employees that have access to the data are FBI Interpol background check according to CGS and are CGS Level 4 trained just to have the proper knowledge and access of the data. Then another question was with regard to what happened with the data. A little bit complex view, but I can just go a little bit fast through it. From a violation on event, it is captured, the system will create check sums, security check sums, it will encrypt the data and encrypt the communication just to be able to transmit information over to the backend. From there, in the backend, the first steps will be to unencrypt the data, unencrypt the communication, encrypt the data and do security validation of the data with check sums, so nothing have been tampered. Then you have an event validations just to see that what we're capturing is correct. And all that happens before it is sent to a queue for any human being to start reviewing the information. From there, we have image crop, image plate, and that's really human beings that are looking at the information according to your business rule before the information is sent over to the DMV. From the DMV, we send over a plate and a state and we will get all the information. Then from there, it is another human being that will be verifying that according to your business rule, we don't have any vehicle mismatch or things that create that we cannot just, you should not send information over to law enforcement. And lastly, the step that you will be working on, it is the approval, which will be the step where law enforcement will approve the violation. So really everything before that, we will take care for you. As soon as the officer approves, then again, we're going to be helping you just to print, mail the information. And also in the case of your project, we're also going to do the integration just to transfer the data to AOC, which is the state court and technically is sent through their system, which is G I S, just to get to G I S so they can, so you can handle the information for payment and due process. And from there, this is something that sometimes we help the customers, but in your case, the adjudication is going to be within the G I S system, so it's going to be outside our system also with the payment side of things. Finally, one of the last questions we got going regarding to, okay, what have you seen in other locations? High dimension, we have seen significantly change in driving behavior. We have, this is just an example from Everett after six months. So what you see here is the speed in relation to the sign speed. So this will be below speed. This is also below speed. This is from sign speed to eight plus, which is what we call the trigger speed, is the speed that you configure the system to be activated and eight plus is when the system will be activated. So it will concentrate on the last column, which is the vehicles that are above the trigger speed because below the trigger speed, we're not doing anything, we're not enforcing. So from eight plus, in this case, we're enforcing, and you see the change in speeders. So you have from April to January 25, so it's a little bit more than seven, eight months, you have a decrease of 80% of speeders. In this other system, similar, the decrease is in minus 73. This is only just two examples just to show a relative short-term decrease. If you let this pass for a year, I can assure you that you're going to be between 80 and 90% if you have a problem in this location, if people are speeding in that location. I don't know, this is the end of the presentation that we have. I don't know if you have any questions.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yeah, one more question for you, Mr. Lusten. Thank you so much. Is the data that you're presenting on screen right now that shows the reduction of speed, is that a sampling of the vehicles that are passing by or should that be like 100% of basically measuring every vehicle that passes through that intersection or section of road?
We measure every passing vehicle. So besides that, the radar will continuously be measuring all vehicles, so below or above speed. So what this show, just to give mathematically an example, you know, if you have from the beginning, 100 vehicles above the trigger speed, this show that you have 20 left after, at the end of the period. So it had been a decrease of 80% of the speeders. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Is that also available data-wise, I guess, outside the hours of when we intend to have it active since this will be a Scudeslaw and we're planning to do it only during the mornings and afternoons or are those measurements available at all times?
It is, it is available at both times, but you need to, of course, need some training just to run the report properly because it's going to be different sign speed. If I understand the situation right, I assume that you have a certain speed while the vehicles are on and another sign speed when the vehicles are not on. So you will need to almost do two reports, but yes, this, what you see in front of you is a real-time report that any city official could do and they just need the proper training just to be able to do the report properly.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of the details you give on compliance and security here. Just for my own understanding, I'm trying to wrap my head around what data is being captured. So we have just a really clear understanding of what it is we have and who then gets their hands on it in the process. So it sounds like you are measuring the speed of every vehicle that passes through the area, but then you will only capture those vehicles who are over the set speed at whatever time in the school zone. And then the data that you are capturing is the license plate only, which you then go to the Department of Licensing to link to the publicly available databases about whose vehicle that is. So that is you receiving data from the Department of Licensing and then connecting it to a specific incident here in Woodinville and then packaging that as a ticket mailed to the household address that is already on file with the Department of Licensing. And then that, if it needs to, goes to the court system, but that incident is not a moving violation, correct? So then no further data is sent back to the Department of Licensing about moving violations because it is not one, it is a different type of infraction. So we are not providing data into the Department of Licensing system. We are only connecting to license plates with the existing public data that is out there. Is that a correct understanding of the system?
Yep, you got pretty correct. So once again, it is a one, it is a one-way communication from DOL, so we just provide plate and state and then we're going to send back the information. The reason we connect, we don't get the data from outlets for Washington State is that in Washington State, it's a little bit unique. You have a special law in regard to registering when you sell the vehicle. So sometimes the data is inaccurate and you have a sale report and that's why we want to get it ready from DOL because it's more accurate. You get also those sales reports. But yeah, you're completely correct. We get information from them and from there it is in our system. That's why they are a little bit sensitive about that they just sharing their information. And then from our side, we will be communicating with the state court, the AOC, just to provide the information to them. So that's the only external communication that happens and that is because you want to use the G I S as a system for due process and payments.
Thank you. I know that there are community members who are concerned about what information is being captured and then how that information could be used by other entities apart from the city, apart from your organization. So thank you for letting me walk through that.
I want to add one more thing and the state law is very specific in regard to this kind of data and it's also specific on the use. So in really speaking, cannot the date, you know, you have video and pictures, but the data cannot even be used for anything else than for the red light or speed violation. The only way would be to get a court order, which is in very unusual situations. We have one case in Tacoma where it was a homicide and it was a court order and thanks to the data they could capture the person in question. But just not even law enforcement can get information if they will request it without a court order, obviously you're aware.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great. Let me go ahead and go to, back to the slide. Sorry, one second. There we go. So with that, it kind of brings us to the recommendation, which would be to award the agreement to Novoa Global for $9,090 per budget and then authorize the city manager to proceed with implementation. In terms of next steps, we would be completely onboarding with Kirkland Municipal Court. There is one thing I was remiss to mention. Based on our early conversations with Kirkland Court, we do anticipate that the costs would be underneath our existing project budget. Can't confirm that until we get the file number, but we do anticipate that that's what's going to occur. Then would be to install the cameras, the driver feedback signs, the flashing beacons and work on that onboarding and implementation process, both with the school district, with the community, as well as within the VOA Global. And with that, I do have a recommended motion for your consideration.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yeah, before jumping to the motion, I did want to, I guess, speak to the, or address the item that was raised by councilmember Art and that was, I guess, notification of legal request. Can you speak to our agreement with the contract agency and how that'll work and how we as a council will be informed?
Absolutely. So as a part of this process, one of the attachments that we have to our professional services agreement is a cloud data and off-site hosting terms and condition. This is something that we developed within our ITT best practices to kind of look for that. And as a part of that, there is a section on breach notification and recovery. And basically what that outlines is how the service provider will notify the city anytime that a breach potentially occurs, very similar to what Carlos was discussing before with the relationship with the Department of Licensing. Depending upon the severity, they would let us know and we'd come up with an appropriate action plan that outlines that. But they will provide immediate notification without unreasonable delays is the terms that's used within the contract. And then the service providers will take all necessary steps to mitigate any harmful effects of such of those disclosure, which includes potential credit monitoring, services, as well as costs, recovery, setting up website notifications to notify the individuals who may have been accessed, their information may have been inappropriately accessed to work through that. So that's within our existing terms and conditions.
And one of the things I definitely want to speak to was subset seven or item seven, which is a notification. The provider shall contact the city upon requests or receive any electronic discovery and litigation holes, discovery search and expert testimonies related to or any way that might reasonably require access to the data of the city. And to be very direct, this is about a several news stories that are prescient today. There was one released by King Five about ICE being able to access DMV data and we want to use this as a safety tool for our citizens and not get into whatever that is. So in order to make sure we do not become a process that is lobbying on behalf of ICE to put our citizens on the other side of that, I think it's very important to reveal that we are doing our damn best to make sure that we are not part of that and that our data is highly secure. When we went through this in May, that was a list of one of the seven items that we went through is the ability to have something that seemed a lot like data residency for Woodinville. And my understanding is that we, A, have a way to do that or at least some things in place to make sure that that is possible and B, we are working with this company to make sure that if there is some level of notification, we have some level of recourse. Does that sound correct from staff? Also sounds correct from the contractor, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Evans.
What is the length of time that we need to hold on to this data? What do we typically see? Because I'm imagining it's not that long of a timeframe.
That's correct. So this is where it kind of gets into, there's different buckets of data, right? In terms of the infraction data, we've indicated that we wish to have it disposed of immediately upon the, basically the release of the information from the court proceeding.
So payment or a judgment where it's being thrown out or whatever. So as soon as that happens?
We want, we do not want this to be retained at all in regards to that. In terms of the contractual data and financial data related to our invoicing, we have a very separate set of retention schedule attached to that that dictates how long we maintain that contractual information, but that's not personally identifiable information. That's just our day-to-day business operations data. Is a third kind of subset of this data, which is the anonymized radar data that we were discussed, it's a sensor type of data that's very similar to what we, in fact, it's the same technology that we use for our radar systems when we do our traffic counts ourselves. It's completely anonymous, it doesn't actually capture anything related to it, it's just, it's pinging the car and coming back, but that's how we do our traffic data analysis. That's more useful to us to retain for a much longer period of time because it shows changes in trajectory. That falls more under the analytical data and the retention schedules we have for more of our capital programming and our public works style of information. But anything related to the personally identifiable data, we want to be removed as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted to verify that we're still, initially we're talking about pickup and drop-off times during the week only. Is that still the thing? And I'm assuming that North Shore still has like a half day, we used to call it half day on like Wednesdays or some weird thing that I oppose on Wednesdays. So that's still Wednesdays, we will count the pickup and drop-off times altered during Wednesdays and then weekends are not tracked.
Weekends are excluded, correct. So we have our kind of two separate buckets of times that we look for with Wooden Elementary and Woodinville High School for our typical day-to-day operations. Then we have the occasional ones that are the half day measures. We're also, this system's flexible enough to where we can work with them to provide them the school schedule ahead of time. So during breaks, it's not going to be active, during long summer vacation periods, it's not During long summer vacation periods, it's not going to be active. This is just during those key times where we anticipate higher pedestrian activity, honestly, related to either going to school, coming from school, and those day-to-day activities where they're using the parks around the school, they're having activities, they're with families, what we're trying to keep safe.
I'd also like to, just if you could briefly talk about the community input that we had, particularly around the wedge. We did a lot of activity there. And then, I'd also like to, we haven't heard from the chief, I'd like to see if he has any input on the process or what he anticipates with this, or if he has any words of wisdom as the subject matter expert on this.
I'll go quickly on the first question, though. We had a lot of robust engagement with the community around the ridge. We sent out mailers to the entire community, inviting them to have an opportunity to speak in relation to this. We met directly on, over a course of several days, during several hours, and talked to several households at Rotary Park that were directly, would be directly impacted. It's been overwhelmingly supportive of the program. They recognize there is some speeding issues around there. After that morning congestion and drop-off kind of tapers off, and they definitely are looking for any support and help from the city that they can possibly do. That's a combination of education enforcement, engineering, as we kind of walked through. This also, we had quite a bit of engagement online in our various platforms, from our Project Woodenville sites to direct clicks that were a result of unique QR codes that we developed, so we could kind of trace back where the people were interacting with the different mailers, the different social media posts that we were putting on, and to try and maintain and keep them informed of this. And so, and I will also say, a very key part of this conversation has been also working before Woodenville High School. We met with their administration, their staff, and even a student representative to get their perspective. And it was very actually enlightening to, talking with that representative, the youth member, who also goes, "Yep, it's a problem. Anytime my friends and I are around, some of it's us, some of it's a lot of the people in the community, but it's definitely something we notice when we're out there playing football in the fields, when we're out there in the community." So, it was interesting to hear they who are going to be going through this, this section probably more frequently than perhaps a lot of the community, will, are very supportive of looking at those levels, too. That'll kick it over to Chief.
Thanks for that. I know the city manager knows that. I'm not afraid to speak up if I think that people are missing something. In this case, it's been nice to just sit back. I think the council's discussion on all of this has been really on point and relevant. Josh is doing such a great job throughout this whole process and this whole program, leading it, and it's been great talking to Novoa Global lately. So, it's lovely for me to just be able to sit back and sort of trust the discussion that's been happening around. One thing that I'll bring up that, you know, was mentioned in the staff report, I think, but really wasn't, didn't come through in the presentation tonight, was with Novoa Global, how much their community engagement and social media and website, like just their robust program that they put together, felt like a really great fit for our needs here and what we're concerned with. And so, we're really pleased, and I'm looking forward to that being, you know, another piece of this that we get to see roll out.
In particular, I was mostly interested in, are you satisfied that with the numbers they've given you and that this will provide the safety in that school zone that we're looking for?
Yeah, I think that what they're saying tracks very much with what we heard from Kenmore, with their experiences, what we've, where we've sort of taken Kenmore's numbers, extrapolated with our own traffic data, what we expect here. It's just been very much in the same ballpark with what NG has and what their experience has been. So, it's been nice to kind of validate what we, what we expect is kind of what they see on their side as far as results. So, yeah, we think that's all kind of pointing in the same direction.
Thank you. With that, do you have a motion?
I move that the city council award the professional service agreement to Novo Global Incorporated at an effective monthly rate of $9,090 for two systems, or a total of 2,000, or $218,143 for the two-year pilot school zone safety camera program along northeast 195th Street, and authorize the city manager to take all necessary actions to proceed with this project.
Second.
A motion and second. Deputy Mayor Randolph, you have the floor.
We really appreciate the work that the staff has done. We had to visit this several times. I think a couple of us have actually switched from where we were to where we are now, listening to the community, listening to the safety concerns. I really do appreciate the work that's gone in to staff to find us someone who can implement something that fits with our needs. And I look forward to seeing how this looks as we implement this pilot program. I think it'll be a good thing. I can't wait to hear some of the data back. Thank you.
Councilmember Art?
Thank you. I am excited to move forward with this. I'm looking forward to safety improvements in this corridor and to showing those safety improvements so that we can examine other areas of the city that may benefit from this in the future rollouts. I will also say, I am team flash, not only because of the immediate driver feedback, but because of the other drivers who get the feedback, that that person is going way too fast and that they should themselves slow down.
Councilmember Evans?
That's what I was going to say, too. I'm team flash, but I think it's the more we can do to get people's attention of, hey, you're going too fast, the better. I also, you know, I've been out there talking with community members. I know we've had some people email us about problems. I know a few of us have gone and walked with community members. I was just out there a couple of weeks ago and could see firsthand people speeding right through there at 40 miles an hour, and it just is really dangerous. So, I'm looking forward to the improvements this is going to make. And having lived through the Bothell version on the West Ridge, I can tell you, it was almost immediate how noticeable the traffic speed reduction has been. And so, I really look forward to seeing that around Woodenville High School and Wooden Elementary. I think our students really deserve that, and for parents to just have that peace of mind that we are doing something very actionable is really fantastic. So, I also want to say thank you to the vendor company, Novo Global, for putting together all of that information about the data security, about the compliance, just everything. Those are really important to us, and knowing that we are going to keep this information the shortest amount of time possible puts my mind at ease as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
Safety programs like this, we heard from Kenmore, they generally have started with the physical safety, and then they've moved on to this as a last resort. We're going at it from a different perspective. We're trying disenforcement first to help raise funds, to then create what the infrastructure will look like when we fix these roads. One, I would recommend that we start coming up with what those programs are going to look like. What are these roads going to look like? What are we working towards? You can point to the community and say, this is what we're raising money for. We're going to put in speed bumps, we're going to put in sidewalks, something that we can point to other than, we're just going to fine you and take this money. The second great concern I want to bring up here is based on the political climate nationally. There is a troublingly flexible view of constitutional rights, particularly through the court system, which is supposed to be the one protecting those rights. And I don't have any problem with the vendor. I don't have any problem with the way they're doing things. What I do have a problem with is providing data in a way that can be used, as we know, against dissidents. If you disagree, if you're a community that disagrees with a certain federal official, you're on the chopping block. And my concern, based on everything that I have been seeing, we've seen this trajectory becoming more and more of a crackdown on anyone who disagrees, this can be a place where the FBI, ICE, et cetera, can find a way to get back at communities. And it is because of that federal overreach. Everyone knows about the No Kings rallies last weekend. This is a problem for me inasmuch as this is a target-rich place for a petty little tyrant to come and crack down on a community that votes in a way that is not in alignment with his values. So, this is nothing personal against Novoa Global. This is nothing against staff for all the work you've done. This is my gut feeling. This is my personal concern about what we've seen eroded in the past year, and I don't want to be putting any of our residents in a position where they could be in the crosshairs with a federal government that has forgotten that the Constitution applies to us and not as a tool against us.
Any further discussion? Can our city manager, or maybe Asha, can you highlight how the money will be reallocated into school zone safety and what it could go for? And I'm particularly interested in, you know, we had a discussion earlier about safety for bike lanes and crosswalks and sidewalks and that type of thing.
One of the requirements, and Josh can correct also, I think, is the state law requirement, too, is that to make sure that it's cost neutral. So, the first thing that has to happen from, that the program itself is cost neutral. In terms of the projects specifically, there is also state law requires, gives definition on projects that you can do. It could be the safety improvements, and also, but it could be sidewalks, it could be road diet, it could be speed cameras, or not, sorry, speed bumps and flashing beacons, anything that helps with the safety improvement. Those projects can be identified and funded. And also, in addition to the projects, those projects have to serve the community, community that were identified in that equity study. So, those are, there are different, taking on to what Josh said, different buckets where we have to check to make sure that the projects are actually, are not only that they are safety project, but also benefiting and impacting and improving safety in those communities. So, that will be part of, as Councilmember Beth Campbell said, too, is that we will start evaluating what we need to do along 195th, what we do need to do along 136, what do we need to do along other school areas? Because just because the cameras are installed at 195th and 136, that doesn't mean what's happening in near Leota Middle. If we are seeing issues there, and if also has the community that is reflected in our equity study, then we could do that, too.
So, I'm, that's one of the key pieces to me, is that we get the opportunity to slow people down, which is the most important thing, is that we get people slowed down. And the data is showing that people will slow down in areas that are most problematic near an elementary school with, you know, young, high school-age drivers speeding. And that's not a great mix. I've talked to the principals of both Woodenville High and Wooden, and also the crossing guard over there, and they verify that it is definitely a problem. So, I'm excited about that. But also, we get, it's kind of a, we get a double dip at that. We get to not only address the immediate issue, but we then get to further increase the safety in the area in many different ways. So, I think this is a great opportunity. The chief has testified that we just, we don't have the resources to place an officer over there to monitor this in the way that would replace what we're doing. So, I'm very much in for, looking forward to this from a safety standpoint. And I would also add that it's only getting the rear license plate. It's not having any facial recognition or anything else that would be a problem for some other issues that are going on nationally. So, I'm in favor of this, and I'm excited to increase the safety in that area. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's have a rule called vote on this, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
Obeying.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
That's five ayes, one abstention, and one no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Novo Global. Thank you, staff, for working hard on this, everybody that worked on this. That brings us to business item number 12, our mid-biennial review. We're looking forward to hearing what Mr. Fritz has to say.
Well, you're going to have to wait for just a minute because I've got a couple of intro slides.
That's not what it says right here.
He's got the good stuff. I just do the intro. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. You mentioned this evening, we have our continued conversation on our mid-biennium review and budget adjustments. First, I'll pause just a moment and have council, if they see fit, to declare the public testimony, portion of the continued concurrent public hearings open, and then we can get into the staff report.
I need a motion for that?
I move to declare public testimony open.
Second.
Motion and second. Any public testimony?
And we can always do that after the presentation, too, if you want to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we can do that afterwards.
All right. All right. Staff report, I, let's see.
Point of, point of order, didn't we open it prior?
This is the one that always trips us up. It's open, but the process for continuing to open.
It's to open it?
The already open one, as we open it, it's just, we all know it's open.
All right, then the motion stands.
One point of order question, though. There was a motion and second. Do we all just need to vote on it because we're tripping up over it? We might as well fully trip?
Let's go ahead and vote for it. Why not?
All right. Phone favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All right. Now, thank you. All right. We're just going to cover some items this evening. Some of them, we've already started dipping into a little bit in past conversations. But starting with the budget takeaways, we'll get into revenues, which Mr. Fritz was very gracious and went through in detail last month. We'll get into, for the first time, expenditures and some of my recommended changes at this point. We'll, of course, cover the property tax levy for 2026, which we need to start taking action on this evening. Fortunately, we're not looking at any changes, so that should hopefully be easy action for council to start taking this evening. And then, we'll wrap up with just a final review of the budget calendar. So, the budget takeaways, if you take nothing else from this conversation, these three bullet points would be the great place to do that. The budget, in summary, is stronger than when it was adopted. The starting, there's a couple of subpieces there. The starting fund balances were about $6.2 million more than budgeted when we created that budget. Council's aware and has gone through this, obviously, several times. When we create that budget in the fall of the year, obviously, we haven't finished that year yet, so we don't know where we're going to end up. Typically, we end up more than we had budgeted with that, those fund balances at the end of the year. That was the case when we, with this current budget, we started $6.2 million more than where we had anticipated when we wrote that budget. The general fund operating margin, I think this is an important one, when that budget was adopted was $12,000. At this point, based on all the changes, that general fund operating margin is anticipated to end the biennium at about $350,000 in the positive. So, that's a significant improvement in our general fund operating margin. And this one, even if you think about this correctly, the capital project revenues, though, and Mr. Fritz will get into it in some more detail, are shown and to, and expected to decrease by about $1.4 million. That's largely due to the timing of impact fee collections. And of course, as council's very acutely aware, we do not budget for use of those impact fees until they are collected and sitting in the bank. So, yes, we will collect, we anticipate collecting less of those based on development project timing, but it doesn't have an impact on the money that we have budgeted for projects because we hadn't budgeted to use those funds because we hadn't collected them yet. If that makes sense. We, through this budget process and continuing it now, continue our holistic, long-term approach to financial management of the city. That one is very closely, obviously, related to our next one. That is why we are in a strong financial position with significant reserves, investments that we have, which importantly, following up on some of the conversations in the past, gives us that flexibility to move as needed, when needed. So, this is the point where we're not necessarily shooting from the hip and having to react on every single, when one project or one expense is higher than the other, we look at this cumulatively. So, and we're looking, and Mr. Fritz and I are actually looking at it constantly, where we don't necessarily panic when, when one expenditure is several thousand dollars over what we had anticipated. That is part of the bigger, the bigger picture that we're constantly evaluating. And because of those reserves, it's not, we're not in a position where we need to move one way or the other rapidly based on one single line item in our long budget being not where we expected it. Because, and we can certainly talk to you some examples, just as easily as we have one project over, we have another we have another project under, for example, and a lot of times those offset themselves. So, it's that kind of evaluation that we go through on a regular basis that, again, has us not necessarily overreacting to every budget and expenditure line item. So, I think we're continuing that approach, and we'll certainly get into the details and hopefully illustrate that this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, Council. Before I begin my presentation, I feel the need to establish an expectation. While preparing for this meeting and this presentation, I put myself to sleep, and so I give no guarantees of your state of relaxation by the end of my presentation. We only have another 18 slides to go. All right, so revenues. I told you last month that we are looking pretty good when it comes to revenues for operating, and capital is down by $1.5 million. And Mr. Buchanan just covered the fact that that $1.5 million is largely due to the impact fees. And again, we don't budget to use those impact fees until we have them in the bank, so it has no impact on our capital projects program, right? No financial impact for anything we've, we're currently working on. So, overall, no council manic property tax increase is proposed as part of our revenue assumptions. We anticipate a 3% increase in the surface water management rates that calculate the surface water fee that's billed to property owners, and that's per our rate fee policy that was established by council several years ago. We anticipate a rate increase to permit fees of 2.7%, again, in concert with our fee-setting policy for permitting activity and not subsidizing permitting activity, having the program fund itself 100%. Operating revenues are forecasted at a positive $427,000, over and above what was originally budgeted. And then, again, the capital project revenues are forecasted for a decrease of the $1.5 million. So, that's the revenues again in brief, and let's dive into.
Quick question now, Blaine. Was, what was the camera revenue projected, was that used in any of this calculations?
Absolutely. The camera revenue is in the detailed line item data for the operating revenue figures. So, this positive $427,000 anticipates a drop in the camera revenue, because we budgeted for the camera program to start in fall of this year, and it's not gonna be starting until 2026. So, any revenue that it was generating before now, isn't, it was a decrease to the budget. So, despite that decrease, we're still showing up nearly a, well, a little over $400,000 increase in total operating revenue.
So, in essence, since this process was taken longer than anticipated, we didn't use the revenues that were anticipated? That essentially what you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so expenditures, I want to dive into the details for the council, so they understand what we're proposing when it comes to the expenditures. So, we're gonna start with the bucket, operating expenditures, specifically salaries and benefits. The city has a longstanding tradition to offer a general wage increase every year. It's based off of the June-to-June Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, or CPIW. The June-to-June change in the CPI for Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue was 2.7%. We actually budgeted for a 3% change and an increase to salaries of 3%. So, there's a budget savings there being realized because it came in under budget. We do this for a couple of reasons. One, it helps our employees deal with the impacts of inflation, but also, it helps the city maintain its market competitiveness when it comes to retaining and attracting talent between compensation studies. So, it's a means to make sure that we stay current in that market competitive environment. In addition to the general wage increase, we are proposing the add of a new position. A couple of years ago, we told council, and council agreed, that we needed a GIS analyst. That we, we had someone on our staff that kind of dabbled in GIS, but they weren't, they weren't a technician or a specialist in that area. And we needed to put on our grown-up pants and start to use GIS data in a grown-up way. And so, we got your approval to hire a GIS analyst. And then, we said, okay, now that we have this expert on staff, we want you to complete X, Y, and Z of work. And that GIS analyst came back to me and the IT manager last month and showed me a detailed analysis of her work schedule and all of the projects that are involved. And we would have all the projects complete in five years. And my concern with that approach is that we've collected data in the last year, year and a half. We've paid consultants to help us collect GIS data. And if we don't have these projects completed, and we don't house that data and come up the processes to maintain that data over time as data changes, that that data will become stale, and we'll have to go out and collect it again, and it will be wasted money. So, our proposal is that we hire a GIS technician. It'd be a term-limited position for two years, and its estimated cost would be $133,000 a year. And the idea would be that this position would allow for the team of GIS people and the IT manager to expedite those projects and get them off the table. A lot of them are one-time type projects, and then, once those projects are completed, we can then offload the position. So, that's the proposal with that. In addition to that, we're gonna be proposing to council with the staffing ordinance to make a change in the way we are authorizing FTEs for engineer ones and engineer twos. In 2025, you can see in the slide here, we have it listed individually. So, the city can hire three engineer ones, and the city can hire one engineer two. But we would like to have the flexibility to offer some upward mobility when we have an engineer one that shows the talent, skills, and initiative that says we want to retain them. So, we're gonna be proposing in that staffing ordinance to transition it to how you see it on the very bottom of the slide there, where it gives the city manager the ability to hire four positions total between the engineer one and two titles. And the mix is gonna be determined by management. The benefit is if Brandon or Mr. Buchanan wanted today, wanted two engineer twos and two engineer ones on staff, we'd have to come to council for permission for that. And so, we're just looking for a little bit of flexibility there. More on the salaries and benefits. Medical benefits are higher than what we budgeted by about 0.7% for 2026. The Teamster collective bargaining agreement had more costs than what we originally budgeted, so there's some cost inflators there. However, we overestimated the cost of L&amp;I costs, so that has some significant decreases in costs. The total net across all operating salaries and benefits from the original budget to the proposal is a net decrease of $142,000, and that's with the position add. Okay? So, the next bucket I want to talk about is supplies and small tools and equipment. There were probably 40 line items that went in that make this budget reduction of $28,000, but the big-ticket items were, we budgeted too much for the cost of more cork infill for the sportsfields, so there's a $60,000 savings. And we need a little bit more money for de-icer and salt, that's $31,000. And it just happens to work out to be close to the net reduction, so, huzzah. There were other nominal changes, but they kind of cancel each other out. And then, moving on to services, services is a big area that we spend lots of money on. It comes with a net increase of $206,000. The, some of the decreases to this budget line item were proposing to postpone the wedge neighborhood sidewalk panel replacement, that's a $220,000 budgeted cost. We overbudgeted on the civil engineering services, so there's a $50,000 savings there. There's some decreased costs to the school zone speed cameras, but as you know from the prior presentation, they're anticipating being well under budget there. Not all of those under-budget costs are incorporated into this budget amendment, because they were determined after all of this was pulled together. And at some point, I have to cut it off, or else it's just too hectic. Some of the big-ticket increases, the police contract is coming in more expensive than we had predicted by about $115,000. The inclusionary zoning work was not a part of the budget plan at all when the budget was approved, so that was an added project. We found out that there's some changes to the park, to impact fee legislation and statutes, and so, as a result, we need to do a new fee study on the park impact fees. But the reality is, we haven't done an impact fee study on park impact fees since, how long ago was it? 2006. So, it really needs to be done anyway, and we anticipate that costing actually under the $60,000, but that was the budget that we put in before the cutoff date, and so on. So, it all nets out to a $206,000 increase to the operating services budget. In summary, salaries go down $142,000, supplies and equipment down $28,000, services come up the $206,000, but the total net change to our operating budget from the original budget to the proposed one is $36,000. So, not a significant net change in any, any real way. This particular slide shows you some key facts about the general fund. It gives you, the big piece is on the bottom right. The operating margin is $351,000. When we passed the budget, the original budget, that operating margin was $12,000. So, we're in a significantly better position with these budget amendments, with our revenue projections, our updated revenue projections and our minor budget changes. And staff worked hard to make sure that budget increases netted out to no more than $36,000, right? I did add on these percentages off to the side, on the right-hand side. It's just to highlight law enforcement, which includes courts, the police contract, it includes one employee, the city, Catherine, who does the passports and fingerprinting and all that kind of stuff. All of that encompasses almost 40% of the total expenditures from the general fund. And then, Asha, to my utter chagrin every time, she spends about 30% of that in public works. So, just those two programs are a huge, are greatly supported by general fund tax revenue. And then, the long-range planning, the council, executive legal, and the internal support team that I direct the administration is, makes up the rest of those expenditures. So, the key highlights, the general fund's a positive operating margin. The sales tax, property tax, utility tax, and investment earnings are the major revenue sources for this biennium. And, you know, I'm gonna put in the plug, because I feel the need. Sales tax is one of the things that this city has an advantage with over other cities. We're consist, out of the 280-some-odd cities in the state, we rank somewhere between 1 and 20 on a per capita basis for sales tax collection. And so, as we deliberate over policy when it comes to how we end up impact the business makeup within our entire community, we really need to be mindful of it. It's the mix that we have. The big-box stores and the small mom-and-pops are important to us in being able to maintain that leader in a per capita sales tax revenue generation. And then, public, let's see, well, I've already touched on that point, so I'm gonna move on to the next slide. So, now, that, so that was operating costs, so now, let's dive into cap, and non-operating costs and the budget amendments associated with those. There's really gonna be three categories I'm gonna go over. The first is capital outlay, but before I go into capital outlay, I'm gonna use a term that isn't necessarily intuitive, it's carryover. We budget for a two-year period, and then, we wipe the slate clean and we start over for everything. And so, for example, we bought a dump truck in 2024. We ordered it, we expected to receive it and pay for it in 2024, that was the, and at the end of 2024, the budget cycle ended. And at the time we were building the '25, '26 budget, we still expected to be able to receive and pay for the truck in 2024. Well, we didn't get the dump truck in 2024 at all, and we got the chassis. And we had to sit on the chassis for a long time until the dump body arrived, and we still don't have the snowplow as part of it, right? So, it took far longer to get it, but we didn't budget for it this cycle. So, we call this a carryover adjustment, and we reconcile, it was a budget expenditure in 2024. We're carrying that over now as our recommended budget amendment. That's $343,000 budget amendment of something that was funded in a prior cycle. And then, some of the new costs are, City Hall needed a new water heater. We needed to do some upgrades in the leased space out at the shop, because they needed demarcation closets for their telecommunications. We have two new tenants up there, and so, we had to run those wires. And then, we didn't have this budgeted, but a stand kit for mounting and dismounting snowplow sanders. That was a decent cost. And on the same token, we want to defer by one year. We had budgeted $200,000 in this biennium for buying some HVACs, replacing some HVAC equipment up at the shop. We're deferring the 2025 portion of that, so this $100,000 is gonna move into the '27, '28 budget, most likely. So, that's capital outlay. School impact fees, this is really a non-budget item when it comes to overall impact to the city, but I'm still required by law to appropriate the money. So, we, we charge a school impact fee, we collect that revenue, and then, when I pay it out to the school district, that gets recorded as a, an expenditure, and I have to appropriate the authority to make that expenditure. So this is just saying, we're going to lower that appropriation amount by the reduction of the school impact fees that we estimated, but it has no financial impact to the city. And then the third category is capital improvement projects. So the first slide here is projects that have budget reductions. The first budget, budgeted item is the twenty-five, twenty-six overlay program. The overall budget reduction is proposed at two-point-seven million dollars. Phase one was under budget, so some of that two-point-seven million is phase one. Phase six, we want to proceed with design work, so we're reserving out about three hundred dollars to do the design work for phase six. Phase two, sorry, yes. Phase, the phase two in 2026. And you're doing that design work now? Yeah, and that design work's starting. And, uh, the, but the actual construction work is being proposed to, to being deferred to 2027. But there's a caveat there. If the budget amend, or if the trestle project, when it goes out to bid, is favorable, we, and if Public Works has the workload capacity, we may pivot and bring that back in to 2026. The second bullet is really another function of accounting and no financial impact to the city. The original budget, in the budget book, said this project, the sidewalk project on one-thirty-six, is going to cost one-point-one-eight million dollars. But the appropriations ordinance said that this project was going to cost one-point-eight million dollars. So all we're doing is adjusting down the appropriation amount to match what the budget book said. So there's no real financial impact to the city there. And then finally, the last project is the design phase of northeast one-eighty-first place, streetlights. The design is coming on way under budget, and so the budget proposal is to reduce the budget for that project. So budget increases for the CIP. We've discussed with council, and, and the council approved the budget increase via approving the contract for the one-thirty-third grid road extension from Wood Snow to Little Bear Creek. That's the roundabout project out here with the pedestrian tunnel and everything. That was a, a two-point-four million dollar increase. Council is aware of and approved the budget increase of a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars for the safety improvements to City Hall. So you were aware that those were going to be rolled in. North, the North Shore Rec Center property acquisition, it, it, now that we're further in the process, we realize that the, the property costs are a little bit higher than we expected. So that adds in the additional two million that would be needed to acquire those properties with the best available budget information to us today. And then we have this SR two-o-two corridor widening and trestle replacement project. It's now reached ninety percent of design. So that gives the engineers the ability to make, engineers estimates on that, on the way bids are going to come in. And those engineer estimates indicate that the project will need an additional four-point-six million dollars to proceed. And Asha and Mr. Susan, Mr. Buchanan can also speak more about this as well.
I'm, I'm happy to. And then, um, on the trestle, I mean, that, that's a function of a number of things. As Mr. Fritz mentioned, it gets, at the ninety percent design, obviously, we have a much better handle on what that project is. Some of the, the large drivers in that, just at summary level, is the non-standard bridge. That's, uh, was, by the time we did design, redesign, and then we're at the point now, that's a big driver of that, that piece. The other one is some project expansion, and actually some contraction on some of the elements. But the expansion, including the trail connection from San Amish River Trail, what will eventually go to the other side of the roundabout, or to one-thirty-third. That piece was added in there, so, and we had to do some coordination with King County on that alignment. So those are some of the larger drivers in that. I don't know, Mr. Susan, if you had some other pieces you wanted to cover in that?
Sure, the, in addition to the two pieces that we talked about, also that with the trestle project, we have done a lot of coordination between the trestle project and the roundabout so that it feels like one cohesive project. But it was trestle project that took on that burden to make that project a cohesive project, both the projects, so that it doesn't feel like you are in downtown and then you are now at one-thirty-third. So there was just a lot of coordination that went in right of way. We are coming close to working on that, so there's a lot of numbers that are coming together. So we're getting, we are getting, while the increase definitely is, is, is big and significant, but there is that, I call it panic for myself, but also excitement that we are getting closer and closer to a hundred percent design. We are getting, I don't want to jinx it, but we are really close to getting our federal permits approved in any time as soon as Washdaw gets it signed at the, at the regional office. So we're getting closer, we are working on the right of way with the whole hope and plan, and we have been aggressive. And so since the last time council has seen, this is when we have actually coming closer and closer to the finish line. But there are a lot of pieces that have gone in as we have moved away from, as Mr. Buchanan mentioned, away from public outreach, from selecting a bridge design, landscaping and everything, to actually putting it all in, on the paper, getting it approved, and hopefully to go out to bid February, March next year. And that is the, that is the goal right now. And I believe that, Mr. Fritz mentioned, this are still not the bid prices. These are the estimate, so when we go out to bid is what those prices, and that's when the project budget will be defined. But this is the estimate based on ninety percent design.
I'll, I'll add, I think this is another good example of kind of that holistic approach to our budgeting, right? So as Mr. Fritz mentioned on the last slide, we're recommending, at least in the proposal before you this evening, to go ahead and do the design on the paver for next year, but hold off on construction of that pending the bid of this project, right? So that two-point-seven million dollars is a good example. Hold that now in case we do need that four-point-five. If we don't need that four-point-five after bids and we have money available, then we, we already have the design done for that paver, we can go ahead and do that paver next summer. But right now, we just have those couple of missing data pieces that we're not ready to say we can do the paver and the trestle next year. That's the financial piece. As Mr. Fritz mentioned, there's also the, frankly, the workload piece. And that's where we see it in some of like the sidewalk panel replacement projects. There is a finite amount of hours in the day, and our staff has reached that point with the amount of CIP projects, knowing that we have some of these real major ones coming next year with the trestle, the roundabout finished, and all the other projects that we have on the docket. So those are the couple of constraints, and I think it's a good example of, again, our holistic approach to managing workload and budget as we go into this.
If I may just add one more detail to the trestle project. The total project cost also includes, or the even increase includes, Woodwell Water District's work as well. So the design and, design and construction, installation of the silver line. So that is included as a cost, but of course, Water District will reimburse the city for the cost, both for design and for construction. That's close to eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, um, let's see. So overall, for non-operating expenditures, it nets out to a net increase of four-point-seven million dollars. And most of that's through the CIP project. And the, the, the good thing is, is because of the way the revenues are coming in, even though I said that revenues are decreasing, it was the impact fees that are decreasing. REIT is going gangbusters. Sales tax from construction is going gangbusters. And there's nothing that's unfunded that's on our current docket even with these increases. So we're able to, to continue to proceed with these, with these CIP changes. The total financial picture. So the left is what the original budget was approved as, the middle is the proposed, and the right is the delta of, of the two. You can see the beginning balance, delta is six-point-two. So we mod, we trued that up to what it was actual. Revenues overall, which is both the revenues of CIP and operating, have a delta of, of a reduction of one million dollars. And then we have the, the expenditures down below. And it, it all works out to an increased ending, ending balance of about a half a million dollars when it's all said and done. So the overall, uh, impact of all of these changes is, is, is certainly manageable. And we don't, we're not seeing a decrease in our ending fund balance. We're actually seeing an increase, so those are all good notes to end the adjustments on. So before I go into the property tax levy, do we want to do any discussions on the city manager-proposed budget adjustments?
Councilmember Beth Kimmel.
I just had a question about the, the, was it the engineer one and two positions? What is the salary difference between those two positions? Is it, I mean, pretty negligible, is it like a step increase?
Yeah, it's, it's one pay grade. It goes, I think, well, I can't remember the pay grade numbers. And a pay grade, I think, is a four percent increase from one pay grade to the next.
Okay, so you, that, that was the G I, that was the GIS question, I have a question about that. So, I mean, if we, if we went heavy on engineer two, are we talking it might cost an additional twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Per, per individual or total?
Not, not even that. So, well, with benefits, I don't have that math, but just taking for sample. So grade thirteen is an engineer one. The median pace, step on that is a hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars a year. The grade fourteen, the same median, step four on that, and the median step would be a hundred-and-twenty-four, so you're looking at an eight-thousand-dollar-ish increase there.
And then one question about the GIS position. So it's a temporary two-year position. Do we anticipate any difficulty finding someone who's willing to take a two-year position as opposed to a permanent one?
That's, I can, I can speak to that. It was something we've had, we, we have had lots of discussions on, actually, and something we evaluate. Certainly, I, I think where we ended up on that was, and this changes constantly based on the labor market, right? Especially for some of those more technical positions. And I'll just say for these ones, tho, those positions that are often in flux when development is in flux, right? So like our engineers, to some extent, our planners, probably this GIS by extension, those, when, when development is going gangbusters, those are hard for us to keep even, or, or hire at any, you know, when that, when that's the case. That's, as we've seen, and we've seen in some of the numbers here, as that development slows down a little bit, it's easier for us to do that. We've successfully done the two limited, at, at least off the top of my head, without thinking about it, at least two different times in my tenure here, has been successful each time, I think. So I think the, the program generally has been successful. I think right now is probably a better time than even, say, a year ago to try to do that when development was a much different conversation. So I, I, obviously, I can't guarantee it, but I feel better about it today than I did a year ago.
And I would add that I think just market drivers in general suggest that we're in a better position to attract a two-year position than we would have been in the last two or three years, so.
Is there a chance you'd like to extend that out to a full-time position, just depending on workload or depending on?
I would reserve any comment on that until, you know, we see the way things roll out. Our intention would be that the position would end. Every term-limited position that we proposed, we've ended it. We did ask for an extension on a couple of them. So the, the term blossomed from a two-year to a three-year.
We've had, we've had three of them, I think. And I think the one year, one of the ones we extended was one of our term-limited engineers.
Yes.
And that was partially because we continued to be more ambitious with the amount of projects we wanted to do, which is not necessarily a staff-driven policy decision. So we, we thankfully asked council, and, and council saw fit to extend that for a while. So again, I, right now, the, the plan would be to finish it in two years where workload's at, driven by whoever. We'll, we'll have to determine that at that point.
Any other budget questions before I move on? Fantastic, all right. So property tax levy. Normally, we don't start talking about the property tax levy until November. And the value in that for me is, I get assessed valuation data from the county every week between now and the time the property tax levy is adopted, because it's in flux. And I don't want to propose a property tax levy that doesn't capture the new construction value that we could capture. So this time, though, because of the council's schedule, we have to adopt the property tax levy at the November fourth meeting because it has to be adopted by statute by the end of November. And we're, the council's not planning on meeting again in November. So we're doing first reading tonight. And as a result, I put in a little bit of buffer, and I'll, I'll explain that in the next slide. No council-matic property tax increase. So the one percent that the council is able to increase the property tax by without vote of the people is not happening, it's zero percent. Unless council directs otherwise, but I don't anticipate that happening. It captures taxes on new value from construction and state-assessed properties. The taxes on, every year, we get to recapture the lost assessment of taxes that were refunded because of one thing or another, so, so that we can, we can recover that. It's estimated that that's around twelve thousand dollars for 2025. So it's, it's always a negligible amount. And it's based on estimates, the amount is, the amount that the council is approving is a ceiling of what we would be able to assess. It's not the exact amount. And it will likely be less than the ordinance. In fact, it's always less than the ordinance. So this is the math that goes into it. First of all, overall, I'm proposing that the ordinance says one, four-point-one million dollars is the assess, assessment of, of property tax. And the way I get to that number is, I take 2025's assessment of three-point-nine million dollars. I add in the council-matic increase of zero dollars, the refunds, which are estimated at this time of twelve thousand dollars. And then based upon the information I'm getting from the county, I get the new construction number in there. And we never get the state assessment property information before the council approves the or, the ordinance. So I use trend data to try to throw in a number that makes sure we will capture all new value. So the council, the proposal is the council-approved first reading of a, a property tax levy of four-point-one million dollars. But I fully anticipate that the actual levy, levy being somewhere in the neighborhood of four point, or four million twenty-eight thousand. So something under the hundred thousand dollars. And we won't know how it works out until early January, when they share the news. So that's the, there's going to be a couple of motions at the end of this presentation. One of them is to approve first reading, and that's what the ordinance is drafted to say. Any questions on the property tax ordinance? Fabulous. All right, budget calendar. And in November, we need to approve the property tax ordinance, adopt it, rather, and, and hold second reading. Hold first reading of amendments to the budget. Hold first reading of the established authorized positions of salaries, wages, and benefits for 2026. That's where we adopt the salary schedule, the FTE count, all that kind of stuff, benefits. And then in December, adopt those two ordinance, ordinances, and approve the fees and rate charges ordinances. And that's the current budget plan based upon, you know, the current council schedule. The next steps would be to receive any public testimony by the council and then to. The next steps would be to receive any public testimony by the council, and then to, to deliberate over the proposed two motions on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions? I think you went over 18 slides.
Pardon?
It was 18 from when he said that, so that was already 4D.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. No questions? Okay. Do, oh, any public testimony? Nope. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah. With no testimony, I move to continue the public hearing on the 25, 2025, 2026 Woodinville Mid-Biennial Budget Review, including revenue sources and any possible property tax increase as part of the biennial budget review to November 4th, 2025, in the Woodinville City Hall chambers at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter may be heard.
Second.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries?
I also moved past the first reading of ordinance number 797, an ordinance of the City Council, or the City of Woodinville, Washington, levying property taxes for 2026 as presented.
Second.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. I just want to say thank you for all the work. It's a great job. And I, I, I would like to point out, and council, in my opinion, we should be really proud. A lot of jurisdictions around us are having budgetary problems. Municipalities, counties, states, federal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And our budget's in great shape, and we're still getting a lot of great work done by, and still being fiscally responsible to the people we represent. And we haven't raised property taxes since 2017, and so, it's something I think council and staff and everybody should be proud of, so thank you for all the great work. Okay, that brings us to public comments, period. Nothing for that second period? City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, just one item this evening, and this is coming back on a question from one of the council members about, or I think a comment that was made about the lights that are out along Wood Duvall going up from the fish statue towards White Stallion. I have a update from staff who's working with PSE, who owns and operates those lights. There's six poles that are out. PSE is aware of them and working through a combination of issues, so not just one, but multiple issues on those. Some of them are experiencing underground issues requiring line adjustments, others require materials that are currently out of stock, but working on procuring those. And then, there is one that's going to require a little bit more extensive work, requires some flagging for traffic control, and PSE is working through that process. So, the estimated timeline for those repairs at this point is hopefully a month, you know, obviously pending some of those materials shortages. So, working through those, but PSE and staff are obviously working to get those lights repaired as, as fast as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Ports of council members. Councilmember Evans.
Just a reminder that our next East Rail Regional Advisory Council is on Friday, October 31st. It's at 10:00 AM. You can sign up online if you want to listen in. Other than that, that's it.
Councilmember Edwards.
Just want to give a quick shout to the Heritage Society for putting on an amazing 50-year anniversary event. Learning about the history of the city was really fun, great turnout, great event.
Deputy Mayor Randall.
Nothing for tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Just a reminder of the Tricker Trees event that's coming up on the 30th, not the 31st, because nobody would show up. Looking forward to having people come and get some trees and plant them, and I assume social media is going to start advertising that pretty soon.
Councilmember Art.
Nothing for tonight.
Councilmember Taylor.
Nothing tonight.
I'd just like to go back and just highlight, Councilmember Art, I met with the Woodinville Garden Club, and they showed a lot of enthusiasm and expertise in helping us with the East Rail Corridor and making that beautiful, and they, they, they had offered to actually do some fundraising, and both with the East Rail Corridor and/or the state, so that was a great opportunity, so. It was, it was a really nice event, nice meeting because they're a very knowledgeable and enthusiastic group, so. With that.
Motion to adjourn.
How are you?